The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Must have all known I was leaving for vacation tomorrow because you filled the room, so thank you for that. First meeting is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and Vicki for the third round of line item transfers. You have in your packets a list of the transfers and what they're for and where the money is coming from. Vicki, do you want to go through it with us?
Sure. Hi. So, I went through and tried to figure out as far as what's currently in a deficit or what is going to be in a deficit, as far as I could tell without the payroll being posted or the bills that we currently are working on to be posted. And the first line item on here is for my expenses. I don't know if you remember last week in the second round, I retransferred money from my assistant accountant wages to my expenses to clean my copier. Well, come to find out, my copier needed to be repaired instead of cleaned. It has the original drums, the original paper feeders, and this, that, and the other thing. So, anyway, I need the $400 to be able to get that copier fixed so I won't have to spend $5,000 for a new one. Maybe next year. Maybe next year. The next one is gas and electric for Layer B building. That is the remaining bills for FY15, which gives us 12 months of gas and 12 months of electric bills that we've paid. So, there won't be any more bills applied to that account. The tree warden expenses, this is for an estimate he received from K&amp;J for the removal of some trees. He had, on Glendale Road, he had received a certified letter from a resident about the liability of our town trees on her property, and so he thought it would be best to be able to take those trees down. So, this is the remaining money that he doesn't have in his budget to cover that. Street lighting is the same. We have 12 months' worth of expenses for street lighting, and as everyone knows, the electric bills were quite high for quite a few months. Veteran agent expenses, $36.92. He paid for the American flag outside this building, and so he took that out of his expenses, and so that made him a little bit short. Park commission wages, those are monies that Randall charged there for mowing the parks. As you know, when we come to FY16, we created a revolving fund for the fees to be put into that account to pay for the mowing of the parks going forward. Election expenses, those are for the machines and the paper ballots for the upcoming election in July, and because those invoices are dated June, we need to pay them in this fiscal year. Medicare is the employer's portion of the Medicare payments. Basically, when we did the budget last year, we base it on actuals that we paid the year before, and Donna tries to figure out, you know, how much more we might need. And so, we're a little short this year based on this last payroll. Unemployment compensation is short, which we knew at the beginning of the year due to a lost unemployment claim that the town fought that we weren't expecting when we did the budget because it didn't come through till the summertime, and that particular individual had a fairly high salary. So, we needed to be able to cover that. This seven cents is my software, just a cleanup item. And vocational transportation, we just received the bills from the Hampshire Regional School. And when we did the budget last year, we estimated 50 grand because we had not yet signed that five-year contract that we had to sign. And that happened at last town meeting, so we weren't sure what that contract dollars were going to be until we signed that contract. So, when we did the budget, we estimated 50, which was what the year before was, and it's underestimated, obviously, because the contract for that bus has gone up. So, then I'm going to take these items. I tried to, I think, as I explained last time, try to take them from within the same groups of accounts. But if that doesn't work, then I need to find other groups of accounts that I can take them from. So, I can take $400.07 out of my assistant accounting wages, which will leave enough money to pay for her payroll for this week and the last two days of June. The building inspector's salary, you know, we didn't hire a building inspector until, I think it was November, and he wasn't at full pay until he received his commissioner license. So, there was quite a bit of money we saved by just having an on-call commissioner at that point in time. So, there's quite a bit of money in there that we could use to transfer out. Zoning board clerical fees, we took the entire $200. Currently, Neil DeCohen is working on all the zoning board items as a member of the board, and they don't have a clerk anymore. But going forward, we are going to put everything into that revolving fund and be able to pay the administrative person out of that revolving fund going forward for FY16. Election wages is going to offset some of those election expenses. We didn't need all that wage money for the elections for this past fiscal year based on the hours that everybody worked and the dollars that they got paid. The town clerk assistant wages is also going to offset some of those election expenses. When we did the budget for FY15, we anticipated more money and more hours for the person who is currently in that position, previously in that position. But currently, that particular position has lower wage and lower hours. So, there is money left in that spot. The Hampshire Council of Governments, we have, our contract for this year was a lot less than was originally in the budget, and so that money, we paid our four quarters, and that money is left over from the budget line. Workman's compensation, there's a little bit of money left in there to offset some of that Medicare unemployment. Group health retirees, we paid all that out, and so that will pretty much cover almost all of the unemployment compensation that's left there. And the vocation tuition, we are up to date, paid that in full. And because of the students that didn't actually attend, there was money there to cover the vocational transportation.
Did we budget accordingly for the vogue transportation next year?
Yes.
Yep. Are there any other questions from the board in regards to the transfers? Charlie? Shannon? I would accept a motion to approve the fiscal '15 transfers, this group number three.
I'll make the motion.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Finance Committee did approve these last week. I'll have one more for you. The last one, I won't be here, but you'll get it ahead of time. And that should be the end of that because that's the last time I can do it, so.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is the discussion regarding the Laflamme property on Cook Road and conservation efforts jointly. Barbara Laflamme, representative from the Concom, a representative from the Water Department, and a representative from the CPC, maybe here or are here.
Conservation.
Very good. So, whoever would like to start, please come forward.
Thank you. Mark Noonan, Winding River Land Conservancy, Barbara Laflamme. Here is one of the owners. So, the project, I don't know how familiar you are. It's 26-point, sorry, 25.6 acres on Cook Road and County Road. And the land sits over the Zone 2 Act for Protection area for the wells in East Hampton. So, started by the Barnes Aquifer Protection Committee and Patty Gambreini. They were moving forward an acquisition of the property through a state grant program called the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant Program, which allows up to $400,000 towards the project. And then, a contribution from the East Hampton CPA and the proposal for a contribution from the CPA committee of Southampton. So, there had been some confusion where how the property should be held. I think Patty Gambreini from the PVPC had thought that one town should hold a restriction and the other town should hold the fee. The problem with that scenario is that, as you know, in appropriations, that we just saw with appropriations, you've got to get your value for what you're appropriating. So, there needs to be more of a discussion, and that's what my email to the town administration, to the chair was about, was that there needs to be a discussion of, if this is going forward, how will that land be held by the two communities? Will they be a joint ownership of a restriction? Will it be a joint ownership of the land? Will it be one holding a restriction, one holding the fee? If we're going to do equal parts in contribution, it's going to have to be some hybrid of this scenario. So, I had proposed that the two communities authorize us to meet with their town councils and come up with a strategy. Some discussion in East Hampton was that perhaps the two towns could sign a memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding of that, this is something they want to pursue. So, I'm really coming into the board and asking, one, is there an interest in us helping to continue to pursue this? There's a grant opportunity for the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant coming back around on the 30th of September. And the landowners have given an option to Winding River to continue looking into it, but we need to be making progress. So, I need to get some direction from the communities to find out where we should go.
Okay. This is the, can I just, I want to jog my memory. We had, this had come up how long ago, a while ago?
About a year ago.
A while ago. And I think the direction from the board at that point was that we issued the right of first refusal. Is that right? Because we weren't interested?
There was, there were two lots that were taken out of the project because they were already under contract, and they weren't going to affect or materially affect the protection effort. So, to allow that to go forward. So, you're right of first refusal on chapter land, I think you released.
Okay.
And I think.
But only on those two acres?
On those two lots.
Not on this 25.6?
Not on the 25.6, which is the remainder, well, yeah, the remainder amount. It may be actually, I'm going to get my numbers right. But anyway, it's, so there's a remainder amount and taking those two lots out. And we had a revised appraisal done reflecting that. And then, we had a review appraisal done, and they were supposed to have submitted, PVPC was supposed to have submitted a grant application in '14, in June of '14. And my understanding, the only thing, was the review appraisal. So, we, Winding River, paid for that. And then, come to find out, she or Patty did not have an agreement from the mayor, and the mayor wouldn't sign the grant application.
Okay.
So, the strategy was to come back to the towns, work with each CPA, get those votes first. So, we just reversed the process. Instead of doing the state grant first, we do the CPA grants first. And then, go to the state, which would be a stronger application.
Okay. So, we have the representatives from those other boards and committees, and I guess I would like to hear from them to see what their perspective is on this. So, I'm just going to look at my, I'm going to tell you that the representative from the Water Commission isn't able to get here till 7:30, but he gave me permission to read what he sent in my phone here. So, he, he is Matt Christie. "The Water Commission doesn't really have an interest for a variety of reasons," which he'd be happy to discuss when he gets here, but that would be later. So, he says, "The reasons are that they're not interested, that it doesn't impact our water supply nor the protection land around our current supply. We would need to do several months of testing and studying to determine if this was a viable source for another supply, and it's almost entirely within endangered species habitat, which would likely limit its developmental potential." So, that's from the Water Commission. With the, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. The Concom like to speak to this?
A bit over a year ago.
Can you just pull the microphone down so those at home can hear you? Thank you.
Okay. A bit over a year ago, when the first two acres or the first two lots were being taken out of Chapter 61, we came before the Select Board with a vote from the Concom requesting that we, we knew we didn't have the money, but see if we could find it. At that time, the Select Board, with our discussion, said we should try to go for the whole 30 acres. When the end of the time period came and we couldn't come up with the money for the two lots in question, we then recommended that, not for lack of interest, but for lack of money, we waived the right to first refusal, and then the lots were sold. That did not change our interest in the remainder of the property, however. It is, is part of a wildlife corridor. It is contiguous or very close to other open space-preserved land. And the property in itself has been mentioned in multiple master plans as a desire to keep it open. At our, the first meeting we had in April this year, when Patty Gambreini from Baypac came with Virginia Ahart from CPC to discuss the property again, we again voted to recommend looking into it, doing whatever we can, and that we supported the acquisition of the property for open space for the town. We are certainly not the attorneys. That would have to be, how it's owned would have to go to legal. But as a commission, we did vote more than once to recommend this property.
Okay. And is there a representative from the CPC here? No. Okay. Charlie or John, do you have any comments?
Just because I was here two years ago, the rest of the land is not developable?
No, it's all developable in 12 or 13 lots.
There is 13?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's certainly developable, fairly easy developable because it's all frontage, onto streets, public streets.
When they're talking about wetlands and all that, I wasn't sure.
There is a stream and intermittent rock that goes through, and there are some endangered species habitat, but the primary endangered species habitat is across the street.
Okay.
Mark, the restriction that's being sought after, what is the language of that restriction? Yes?
The thought was by Baypac and PVPC that it had to be a restriction. It didn't necessarily have to be a restriction. It could be, if both communities were comfortable owning it, they could actually own it jointly through the water departments because the water departments can own land in each town. A conservation commission can't own land in another town, but a water commission can or a water department. So, that was, but those are things that we discuss in legal. So, it could be a restriction if, you know, if the thought was that all that, to protect it was that we wanted to have a restriction or the town wanted to have a restriction, that would be one avenue. But this is where I think PVPC kind of got lost in knowing what it would be. I need, we need to know what the towns want in terms, do they want to own it because they want to develop a water supply well on that site in the future? Then you'd want to own the fee. You wouldn't want to own just a restriction.
Yeah, I understand that, Mark. And based on stuff I've done in town before with the TCE contamination, everything else through that area, I don't see Southampton looking to develop any well field out there.
No, that's fine.
But I also understand that they're trying to mitigate any impact with the city of East Hampton because it's part of the recharge area for their water supply.
Correct, yes.
But when we talk about owning the land without restrictions and having the water departments own the land without restrictions, that opens itself up to what happens 25 years from now when political climate changes.
Right. What they would probably do is there would be some type of restriction. It might be across, you know, they would be jointly held so that maybe one holds the restrict, that they both hold a restriction against the other and that they own the land jointly if they wanted to own the land. If they just want to own the restriction, they can own the restriction jointly. So, it's a complicated, there's a complicated legal thing that needs to be worked out, but it boils back to what's the interest of the communities? Do each community have an interest in this project? And if they do, then Winding River is certainly happy to help out. If they don't, then, you know, we've expended our funding and we'll have to go.
So, the way I'm hearing it now, Water Department in Southampton's not interested.
That's the way I hear it.
Conservation is interested. And you're looking for this board to give you direction as to where we think the community should go with this?
I'm looking to get some idea, I'm not necessarily trying to put you on the spot. I would rather go to legal councils to see what the possibilities for ownership are first and then see what everybody's comfortable with, have that same discussion with East Hampton, and then come back to the board and get that direction.
Let's say we were interested, what's the cost to the town?
At the moment, just your legal council to meet with our, with us to discuss it. So far, there hasn't been a cost to the town. Winding River's absorbed the cost of the first appraisal and the second appraisal, and will probably absorb the updated appraisal if somebody, if somebody says this is the project that they want to do. And the way it works, it's not like we, you know, in the end, somehow through the grant process, we'll get that money back. But if it doesn't happen, we will lose that money and we'll just, and we'll just, that's what we do.
If we're going to endorse our legal council to move forward with this, then, first of all, it's going to cost us money. Second of all, I'd like to see some kind of a cap, not just an open, let's just have our attorneys talk to each other if we go on that route.
Heather?
Going back to East Hampton, did you say you've already been in discussion with East Hampton or you're in the process of it?
We met with the CPA on, last week. And I've been corresponding with the planner, Jessica Allen, but don't have a firm commitment yet. So, I would say we'd have to work through your office to, before we would even.
So, I guess the next question is, if East Hampton doesn't sign on, is this still a feasible project with just Southampton?
If they don't sign on, I don't know that it would be a feasible.
Okay. So, going back to that and trying to be as conservative as possible with financial resources, my recommendation would be to try to set up a joint meeting with East Hampton, the parties involved in East Hampton, and these folks to see where it's going. Because if East Hampton says, "We don't want to do this," and Southampton's already expended three grand in legal expenses, we're kind of flopped over.
No, I agree. That probably makes sense.
John, do you have anything to add?
No, that makes a lot of sense.
Shannon? So, would someone like to make a motion that we have a joint meeting with East Hampton to see which direction they're headed before we make a final decision?
John's far more articulate than I am.
I don't know about that, but I'll make the motion that we have a joint meeting with the Southampton counterparts to find out what their interest is in going with us on this project.
Second?
Liz, when you say joint meeting, do you mean meeting with the East Hampton mayor and all the parties involved? Or do you want to do more of a behind-the-scenes meeting first to figure out what information can be brought back to the board?
Behind the scenes.
Behind the scenes, okay.
Yeah, I won't say anything then. I personally would want to have everybody that would be involved because behind the scenes, I'm not sure if those people can get the whole town.
Well, if you would like to rework your motion, then you can do that.
You said all parties involved, right?
Well, I said all parties involved.
Right. I think my only concern is that we're talking two municipalities here, not just one. So, it may be one thing for Southampton to say, "Let's pull in CPC, water, and conservation," and these folks. I think it's an entirely different thing to say, "Okay, let's bring in the mayor, the entire city council, the CPA source over in East Hampton, and all their other parties that are involved."
Does East Hampton, can East Hampton just appoint the mayor to be the representative to this? Or whoever they want to appoint?
Well, I think it's going to be the same problem is, all the different groups, I don't think have come up with one decision over in East Hampton. So, we're kind of pulling it out of order. Why don't we call over to East Hampton and ask them where they're at and see who we can speak to?
What if I amended to say the appropriate parties, and we'll let Heather make contact with East Hampton to find out who those parties are? Would that work?
But it's up to the board how they wish to proceed. I'm just trying to.
That's my amended amendment.
Mr. Noonan?
Yeah, I was going to say, my approach was to email yourself and the town administrator and the planner and the mayor, because the mayor speaks for the town, the city. So, that if they wish to designate, obviously, Southampton can't designate their people, that we get in a room and we decide, is this viable or is it not viable?
Right.
And I'm comfortable with that. I think that's what we're looking for from this board and from them.
Very good. So, there's an amended motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have Todd Bard to talk about solar net credits. Mr. Bard's returned to talk to us about, further about regarding the Deerfield Solar Net Credit Energy Project. Thank you very much.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. I just wanted to, Heather asked me to come back up and there might be some new board members and kind of fill them in on solar and net metering credits. So, net metering credits came out of the 2009 Green Community Act. So, you're allowed to take net metering credits off large-scale solar projects and utilize them on municipal accounts. So, we have a project developer that I've done some work with out of Chicago, Illinois, that has a six-megawatt project going on a brownfield site in Deerfield. And so, it'll produce about 7.5 million kilowatt-hours. So, it's about 30-acre solar facility. And you would be potentially one of the off-takers. So, you would be consuming about half a million kilowatt-hours annually off the project. Some of the other off-takers are the city of East Hampton, which was just mentioned earlier, Gateway Regional School District, the town of Deerfield. Central Berkshire Regional School District is interested, and we're waiting for a third meeting with them. And then, the city of Pittsfield, and then Farmington River Regional Schools. So, it should be six or seven off-takers that would consume all of the power credits off of it. And your potential savings is a little over $10,000 a year. And I've done about 50 megawatts of net metering credits for cities and towns and state colleges and the Commonwealth. So, my job is to make sure that you guys get the best contract legally and financially and make sure that there's protections in there with your legal counsel or a recommended energy attorney to protect you because these are 20-year contracts with renewals. So, they are long-term contracts. And most municipalities, you know, sign contracts three to five years at best. So, it's something that, you know, we have to be concerned about. And I'm local, I'm here in Agua, Massachusetts, so this is what I do for a living. I just did the city of West Springfield, I did Agua, I did Long Meadows, the town of Ware and Muntzen. So, I've done a lot of communities in and around Southampton. So, I don't know if there's any questions or ideas or concerns or.
Just a question, which didn't come up when you first time was here. I forget how long you said the agreement would be for, first of all.
The original contract will be probably a 20-year, and then they'll probably have five-year renewal or two fives or a 10-year.
20 is the base. And it just came up, we're talking about this possibility of acquiring maybe 28 acres of land. Not that that would be suited for a PV project, but for instance, five years, six years down the road, all of a sudden, somebody donates X amount of land to us, and it's perfect for a PV project. If we're already in this agreement, we're not going to be able to develop that unless we sell the energy out, correct? We wouldn't be able to get out of this agreement and use our own PV project?
Correct. Correct, yeah. And I do that all the time. You know, a lot of cities and towns don't take their own net metering credits off their own land. It's sold off to somebody else.
So, we could sell it back?
Yeah. And I'd certainly help you in that regard. And actually, I would love to find land in Southampton to build solar projects so you guys could actually get the tax revenue from it, which could be substantial.
Can you talk about the cost to us again so we can?
Just be that legal cost that would be your upfront cost. No other cost would be incurred by the town.
And that would be shared with the group, correct?
Yes, yep. I always try to get the off-takers together, hire one lawyer, and then split the costs.
It feels like there's a catch.
Nope. Everybody says that. It seems too good to be true. I did Worcester State University's contract. So, the first project that I did was up in Orange. And last year, saved them $199,000. I just got them a second project, will save them another $300,000. And that's annually. They will be saving half a million dollars a year just on the Worcester State campus.
So, let me just put this as simply as I can. Somebody has all these solar. Somebody has all these solar panels in their town, and they want to sell their energy, right? Who are they selling it to if we're getting it for free?
You're not getting it for free, you're getting, you're getting it a 20% discount.
We're getting a discount.
We're getting our energy from somewhere different at a discounted rate.
So I was here like six months ago and actually sold you electricity from GDF Suez. So you're buying your electricity from Suez, which is a supplier in Massachusetts. Here, you're just going to be buying net metering credits that go on your old Wamiko, new Eversource bills. Those credits go on at a 20% discount, so if you get a dollar credit on your bill, you're only paying 80 cents for it.
Like a Groupon.
Like a Groupon.
Right, okay, thank you.
I hate that, I just, but that's theoretically how it works, it does.
Okay.
I have a question for you. You said that you did the Gateway Regional?
No, so there'll be an off-taker on this project.
Okay, so there, they haven't been converted already, and I know up in Huntington, they are doing a project, or have done a project, with solar panels.
Yes, so different towns have, Gateway has chosen not to go with Huntington, to go with me and this project up in Deerfield. So I met with the superintendent, the finance coordinator there, and they got the contract, and they're kind of reviewing it first, and then we'll vet that, but they want to come on to this project, because this project actually will be built long before any other project in Eversource territory.
Thank you. Reason I ask this is because the Hampshire Regional School Committee has put together a solar presentation that we were given at the last meeting, and through that, all of the members of the school committee agreed to look at other neighboring areas, and Green, and the Gateway Regional, Huntington was one that we were going to be looking at to see if we could possibly mimic what they're doing at Hampshire Regional.
Okay, but I don't think that Hampshire Regional would affect us, because we, the solar, correct me if I'm wrong, the solar credits wouldn't be applied to the Hampshire Regional High School bill, because they're not in the town of Southampton.
I'm thinking if you go with the same...
You could tag on to that one.
Yes.
You'd have to have a big project to supply Hampshire Regional, and then have enough power to send it back, I would think.
Actually, I've reached out to Hampshire Regional to be an off-taker on this project, and it's kind of gone on deaf ears, unfortunately. And I've talked to Sandy Poole or Inny Amers, because they lost their landfill project, it's going to go out for RFP, so there was a lawsuit, and I don't know if that's actually going to move forward, but there is what's called a net metering credit cap, so Eversource has about 18 megawatts still left under the cap, and then once that cap is met, no more solar projects, until the state legislators and the governor increase the amount of net metering credits. And if they don't, the rest are left out.
There's also a tax break on businesses that do it, and Hampshire Regional would not fall into that, but the company that did it would be able to get a tax break.
Right, but only, but only if they fall under the cap. They don't fall under the cap, they can't build it. There's a 30% investment tax credit?
Yes.
Yes, nonprofits don't have that, municipalities don't have that.
Right.
And that's what, that's what actually fuels these projects, it's not the solar, the clean energy, it's the tax credits.
It's the profit.
It's the greed factor.
The green?
The greed.
The green greed factor.
Yeah.
To answer Liz's question, I think there's two downsides, one is we're tied into a 20-year, and secondly, don't we have a floor on what we're going to pay?
Yes, eight cents.
So that's the floor, if it drops below eight cents, and goes to six, we're still paying eight cents.
Right.
What's the chances of that?
I think we went through that.
Yep.
We did go through the chances of that happening, and they weren't very high.
No, very, very, very small. And the one I did for Worcester State, the second one, has a nine-and-a-half cent floor. It's different, it's National Grid versus Eversource, so there's a little difference.
We talked about where the credits would go to, like, they don't have to necessarily come to the town hall, right? You could apply them to the elementary school, you could apply them to the police department.
Yep.
New fire station, we said, new complex.
Right.
Yep, and we can change that...
And you can change that twice within the 20 years?
Twice per year.
Twice?
Yeah, every year for the, life of the contract.
But it's not, it's not twice for Southampton, it's twice for everybody in the group.
Twice for all, right, twice per project.
You have to make sure nobody else wants to change it.
Right, yep. And so that's coordinated with each off-taker.
Right.
Is, you know, whether it be Heather and I looking at the bills at some point, and if there's a, if there's a credit balance on one account, then we stop sending credits to that account on Schedule Z, that's the, kind of says to the utility where the credits go, we change that allocation, and you only want to do 1% increments, but you can go to decimal points, which is ridiculous, but that's what you can do.
And so we had, we were looking for what when we didn't decide on this the last time? Just more information, time to think about it?
I can't remember, quite honestly.
I think it was time to think about it, because we were saying about $10,000 a year, and we wanted to make sure that, that 20 years was something we wanted to get into.
So was there any concerns or non-concerns, comments from the board, questions from the board, decisions from the board?
What do you need from us now?
Just probably approval for Heather to move forward to negotiate the contract, and then I can get a contract from Lake Street Development, who's going to be the developer, off to all of you, and then I would recommend having a discussion with, the attorney I would recommend is Jeff Fialke out of Bacon &amp; Wilson, he's done multiple solar projects. I recommend him, one, he's local, he's less expensive than a lot of attorneys, and he's done a lot of projects that I've worked on, representing the cities and towns.
So we won't know our legal cost until we know how many towns or how many people you have in this group, right? So the first step would be reviewing the lease, getting a copy of the agreement, reviewing that?
Yeah, the one that I just did for Berry, the town of Berry, Quavon Regional, and Tantasca, there was two other off-takers that I didn't bring. The legal bill was about $4,500 in total for all the off-takers, so those three, so those three split $1,500 each. So if there's seven here, the bill should still be $4,500, it's one legal contract, so six or seven into that.
All right, when do you think you'll know how many off-takers, is that what we're calling them, off-takers?
Yes, off-takers, yep. I should know within the next 14 to 21 days, yeah, Farmington River and the city of Pittsfield will be coming on.
I speak for myself, I think there's interest, and we'd like to get a copy of the contract to start the review process, and have you come back to us when you say, "Okay, I've got seven, let's, we're ready to go." Because we can't really talk to a lawyer until we know how many people are talking, right?
No, you can still do that, you can, you can do it in peril.
From our point of view, we don't know if we're paying $1,500 or $750.
If you were paying, if there were six off-takers, you'd pay $750, if there were seven, you'd pay $642. So you could move forward knowing that number. Or not.
Because there's got to be more than five, because right now at five, we still have five-and-a-half million kilowatt-hours allocated, and there's seven-and-a-half million left, so, so it's either going to be five within one more addition, or two or three more additions to take that 2 million kilowatt-hours. City of Pittsfield can take it all, Farmington River can only take half a million, so I still have to find someone for one-and-a-half million more. And I've got some housing authorities who are interested in it, it's just it's not as lucrative to the developer to sell them to housing authorities as it is municipalities.
At what point in the process do we have to sign on the dotted line that commits the town?
I would say in the next 30 to 45 days, you know? They'll want to close it out, so they can actually start constructing the project.
I'm okay with going forward, investigating it more.
And I'm here to bounce any ideas or questions off, and my job is to make sure that you're protected and that there's no financial cost before the work is being done.
What do you think?
I think we move forward.
So I guess I would, Shannon, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, so I would accept a motion to have Heather move forward with the project and contract negotiations with Bacon &amp; Wilson.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Bard.
Thank you.
Have a nice, have a nice Fourth of July.
Thanks you too.
Thanks for coming back.
So I'm, I see a lot of people sitting out here, and I'm going to take Heather's town administrator report, open time for the public, and then I'm going to probably skip forward a little bit, so, so you all can go home.
I promise I'll be very brief. Just a couple of quick things, the first one is end of the year stuff, or end of the fiscal year, rather, July 4th holiday is coming up, personal policy procedure board rules and regs do not specify as to what happens when we work four-day weeks in town hall, and the holiday's on a Saturday, it does say that we go by federal guidelines, federal guidelines say that if the holiday's on Saturday, you observe it on Friday. Problem is, we're not here on Friday for a good portion of the town, so it becomes a question of how the board wishes to proceed on this one. The policies do not spell it out. We could close the town hall on Thursday, we could close the town hall on Monday, or we could do what some other communities do, which is offer the option of a floating holiday, or we could do nothing, and not observe it at all when it's a four-day week. It's up to the board how they wish to proceed, but at this point, there's no guidance. I think PPB recognizes that it's a four-day work week for those in town hall, and for some other departments. Question is, how do you wish to proceed?
I say let them take the holiday, have a floating holiday, I mean, I don't think they should be penalized because we're not open on Friday.
I thought you sent out an email saying that we're having Thursday off.
I never sent said email.
That's funny, because Lori got the same one in the office, I'll have to go back and look.
I'd let it be a floating holiday. Because people schedule their vacations and stuff, so...
It depends what kind of place you're at, I mean, where I am, you can either take it Friday or Monday, at the factories and shops around here, sorry, but thank you for the extra day, or you can take a floating holiday, so depending on what business you walk into, it has all different policies, so. Are we going to start a precedent?
Well, I think it's got to be...
Oh, we always start a precedent when we do these things.
Well, I think it'll be clarified in the amended bylaws anyway. Are you just looking for clarification because the 4th of July is...
I just need to give people further guidance, I think at this point, people have pretty much already made up their decision whether they're working Thursday or taking a holiday. I think a lot of us are just taking Thursday off, because we have vacation time regardless.
If we're going to do it, do you need a motion to do it?
Um, I...
It's not on the agenda.
It's up to the board, I mean, and we probably don't need a motion, but I think just the consensus of the board on which way to go, and I think as Liz said, moving forward in personnel policy procedures, it will be better spelled out, and more often than not, this isn't a likely occurrence that you have the holiday on a Saturday and you work on Thursday.
Next year would be on Sunday.
And then it'll be a Monday holiday, so it'll work.
From my point of view, I think let them take a floating holiday, but they've got to take it within X amount of days, so we get it off the books. Where I happen to be, if it's a holiday, it's 120 days, but that's just me, and that this is for a one-time only, until the PPPB makes, you know, the ruling on it, so we don't have any issues in the future.
I guess...
Why don't you just make it Thursday, make it easy?
Because you don't want everybody to be out of the building on Thursday, too.
Have it be our holidays on the Thursday, if half the people are going to be gone already.
But it's not a holiday to the rest of the town, so what if you want to come get a building permit on Thursday, but everybody's gone?
What if he's closed, that's the thing, what if he's taking it on that day anyway?
I don't think there's enough notice to close it on Thursdays.
I think going forward, it needs to be spelled out clearly, and whatever decide, people decide to do this week, since that's really what we're talking about, is fine.
What are you saying, let them take it anytime?
I say let them have a floating holiday, if they're going on vacation in September, let them take an extra day then.
Do you want to put a cap on it, or can this...
I would put a cap on it, we don't want to keep rolling forward. I mean, 120 days, 60 days, 90 days, that's all a good timeframe.
That's fine.
Whatever number, what number you want to...
30.
30?
30.
How about 60? How about 90? That gives them three months to take an extra day.
Some factor of 30.
I'll go along with 90, just so we don't sit here all night.
All right, so the next item I have here is items to consider. So I spoke with many town administrators and town managers over the past several weeks, whether I gave them a call, or whether I hung out with them at a small town administrators' Massachusetts meeting or other meeting, and they all recommended the same thing, a selectman's retreat. This is an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to sit down amongst themselves and discuss the vision for the town. Although it must be posted as a meeting, the real purpose is not to deliberate, but rather to come up with a vision for the town. A second recommendation that came from many town administrators and town managers in the business who have been doing this for quite a bit, after they realized that our board is rather young, and the notion that we don't have folks here who've been on here decades at a time, which you often see, they suggested actually having a consultant come in and review things, the basics, go over some additional training, and make sure everyone really knows the ins and outs of the position. Those are both recommendations from very seasoned town administrators and town managers across the state. One of the benefits of doing a retreat would be the purpose of actually, as Liz phrased it earlier to me, is kind of like a working meeting.
I prefer that over a retreat.
Okay, well, they usually refer to it as retreat, but either way, but the concept would be, you know, sit down, discuss the policies, and then whatever the discussion is, you summarize and present it at the next meeting. So although the public may not be present, they get an idea of what happened, so it's not, you're not making any major deliberations, we're going to spend $4 million on this, but more so it's the direction of the town should be to encourage business, or to encourage citizen participation, whatever it may be. And, you know, we've, we've sat down for eight hours, and we've drafted some policies that we'd like to put before the entire board in a formal session at the next meeting to ratify.
Okay.
Is that something the board would be interested in doing? And if so, does the board have an idea of when they'd like to try to do this?
I personally think it could be important enough that I'm willing to take a vacation day and...
Do you have a floating holiday you'd like to... Do you want it on a Tuesday, or not on a Tuesday?
This is the board's thing, they can do it whenever.
Do you want it on a Tuesday, or not on a Tuesday?
Be honest with you, I don't think I'm going to make a decision right now.
You want to, we want to collaborate later on?
Yeah, because it's kind of hard to pick out a day.
Oh, we can schedule that as we go.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea, though.
Okay.
Is there somebody from the Select Board Association, if you will, that could be a mediator, or has done this in the past? We don't want to waste a day going over...
Let me find out for you, I don't, I don't know, but I imagine we could find someone. Other news to report, we did receive a call from DEP earlier today to congratulate us on the joint award to East Hampton, Southampton, and the PVPC for funding to look into bacteria tracking for the Manhan River and the amount of $50,000. These funds will be administered through PVPC. The last piece of information I have here is just on financial land. We have a fixed asset study that'll be conducted by the auditors beginning in August, this will allow us to get closer to being Gatsby compliant as we move forward in the years ahead, and also, over time, it will increase the cost of our audit by a couple thousand dollars to have a complete study of all the financial records. It's another term for it, but unfortunately, I've only heard it once today, and I'm not going to be able to recite it at this moment. All good?
All good.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any Select Board Liaison reports?
Oh, yeah, but I thought you wanted to do...
Oh, you want me to come back there, okay. Open time for the public. Hi, Mr. Thro.
How are you? Mark Thero, 100 Pleasant Street. I was hoping maybe tonight to get a, an update from the Fire Department Liaison, Charlie Kinnicki, on the status of the ALS license. It's, it's been over a month, he originally stated in the paper that this training would be done by about the 10th of June, and it'd be up and running in two weeks, so I was just wondering if we could get a status on that.
Does anybody have a status?
I could give you an update, but I thought we were going to put the liaison stuff together after everyone else was done. It's up to you, Liz, whatever you'd like to do.
If you would like to wait to answer his question, you can, if you'd like to answer his question now, you can.
All right, well, my understanding is that the time has been extended, that he has a, the fire chief being he, has a target date of the beginning of August to get that license activated and get moving forward with it.
Can you state what the reasons are, that it's going to be another month?
Other than it's taking him longer to put his staff together and do the training, that's about what I got from him.
It's very reassuring. That's very reassuring. So I'd also, I have two other issues I'd like to speak on tonight. One, the last Select Board meeting, wherein Mr. Martin spoke to Mr. Fortin at public speak time. He made some comments to Mr. Fortin that he was making assumptions that Mr. Martin wasn't on the hiring committee, he was not on the Board of Selectmen, and the contract was signed, and that the chief's contract stated that he had to live within the town of Southampton or within five miles of the fire station, and that that language was ambiguous, and so that's why he changed, you guys changed it. Now, Mr. Martin, you stated that you, you deal with contracts all day long as part of your full-time job, and so you stated that you didn't think any of you liked the way it was written, and so you put it aside to deal with other issues. And I'm just curious, what other issues are you dealing with, with the fire chief, that you put his residency aside?
I didn't say we put it aside to deal with other issues. I said that was one issue that we wanted to settle on and put it out of the picture so that we can deal with whatever else was going on there.
So I guess my question is, when, when you decided to change his residency requirement, did you check with the hiring committee, the people that actually put that list of qualifications and stipulations together, before you thought it was ambiguous? Did you check with them? Did you check with the town attorney on this before, or did you just think it was ambiguous on your own, and so you just changed it?
We checked with the town attorney, and others on the Select Board, talked to the hiring committee, and we've got different opinions of folks on the hiring committee.
It's my understanding that, in talking with some of the folks on the hiring committee-
Correct.
-that it was their intention that the chief lived in town. And I think if you look around, the East Hampton Fire Chief, well, he lives in East Hampton, the West Hampton Fire Chief, well, he lives in West Hampton.
And that-
Westfield lives, the chief lives in West Hampton.
And that's irrelevant to the topic. What I said is-
Well, it's not irrelevant, because typically, department heads live in the community that they work for.
Typically, department heads in the, live in the community. That's fine. It doesn't matter what West Hampton has, East Hampton, Westfield, you're trying to bring everything in. What I said last time was, I looked at the contract based on the information that was in front of me, and it said he has to live in the, I don't know if I'm quoting it right, the town of Southampton or within five miles, or within five miles of Town of Southampton.
Right, you keep putting that word "or" in there, and let me read it to you. It says, "Town residency within a five-mile radius of the Southampton Fire Department within one year of appointment to the position."
Correct.
The word "or" is not in there.
Okay, that's fine.
Can you read that line one more time?
I can't. Town residency within a five-mile radius of the Southampton Fire Department.
So that's it right there, because it doesn't say Southampton. It says in town.
It says town residency, and you're stipulating that town residency could be any town?
I'm saying that's exactly how people are reading that.
So I'm going to interrupt at this point. With all due respect, Mr. Thro, the Board of Selectmen based their decisions and their own personal decisions on how to vote in this matter on the information that they received and however they received it. I can't imagine that, I can't imagine that we're going to go back and vote on it again.
Absolutely not. I'm not expecting you to.
But, and we could talk about this for a very long time, but the decision of the board is the decision of the board, and I think that we all understand your perspective on this issue.
Yeah, I mean, you, you beating your opinion against my opinion really doesn't matter because it was based on what I read at the time in my experience, and that's my decision. You can say you don't agree, I'm fine with that, but you don't need to keep bringing it up because it is what it is, like Liz said.
Very well. So the other issue I have is, last week, Mr. Martin gave a report of the Public Safety Committee meeting, and you said that during that meeting, it was discussed the need for the police and the fire department and the town vote at the annual town meeting, and that the price tag was just too high, and the town didn't want it, the people didn't want to pay for that. And so you said that Mr. Kinnicki was going to be putting together an article for the paper, and that if the funding passed for the $650,000, that you were, we were going to have an architect design a building somewhere in the range of seven or eight million dollars.
That's what we talked about at the committee meeting, correct?
My, my question on this is, why were we building something for 10.8, almost 11 million, if we can do it for seven or eight?
Well, again, my opinion, I went on the committee only a couple of months ago, but, and Charlie can answer it better, but my understanding is, we brought the architect in to say, here's what we currently have, fire, police, can you design something that'll meet the needs of our town now and 20 or 30 years into the future? And working with architects, you know they're going to come back with what they feel is the best concept for the town. Sometimes the best concept costs too much, so you have to go back and say, you have to take the project and cut it, cut this off or cut that off, here's what we need. So we went with, what's the best for the town, give us your design, rather than saying we can only spend X amount, design to that amount. So it's a different way of doing it with a price tag on it.
So-
Am I, am I correct?
Yeah, you're very correct with that.
So with, with 39 override questions defeated since 1991, you guys thought building a Taj Mahal the first time around was the right move?
You know, the way you come up and address the people, you just want to argue, I gave you-
Sir, I'm not arguing, I'm just asking questions.
I gave you, I gave you the information. We didn't say we wanted a Taj Mahal. We said, here's what we have, can you, as an experienced architect, in all your experience that you've built these, tell us what you think would be good for the town now and going into the future? It wasn't a Taj Mahal by any stretch of the imagination.
Three to four million dollars difference is huge.
Not really. It depends on the construction. You can put a Butler building up, or you can put a brick building up.
Right.
A brick building would be much better and stand up longer, but a Butler building may last you for the 20, 25 years, not be as nice. So those are two different things. Again, I'm well-versed in construction, and I don't see a big deal with coming back with an estimate up here if the town wanted it. But they didn't want it, they were very clear, but I think they were very clear from everything I hear on the street, we need a new police department, we need a new fire department, what can we do that we can afford? And that's what the Safety Committee is going to go back and find out and present it to the town again. If the town says great, they'll vote for it, if they don't say great, they won't. The July 9th vote is not for funding, it's just to find out, gauge their interest in going forward with the projects.
Right.
It's no money attached to it.
I understand what the July 9th vote is for.
Okay, so did I give you a clear concept of what the committee did?
No, you didn't.
Then I guess I can't do any better than that.
Thank you, Mr. Thro. Anybody else?
You did very well.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I get everybody for the open time, and then I will move ahead, Mr. Whiteley. Anybody? Hold on, I got a couple of people standing up here. Hi.
Well, Ed Gwinner, I see that the Water Commissioner just came in, and maybe he should come in here when I have something to say about-
Do you want me to call him back?
Yes, please.
Is that man? Yeah, could you run out to the parking lot? I didn't realize that you wanted to talk about Water Department stuff, Mr. Gwinner.
Well, he, he made a comment here that is untruthful, and everybody here heard it. And I, I've got a letter right here from Dr. Tom French, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, that says this is not a turtle zone. There's a map out there in the hallway.
You're saying not a turtle zone?
Exactly.
Okay.
He said endangered species, which is, we started trying to get this released because it was mapped improperly. We started in 2009, and here we are in 2015. Now it's mapped out there, and I have a letter from the head man saying that it was mapped incorrectly. So the other thing I had to say about the water is, we drink, we buy water from Southampton. Thank you.
If, if I, let me just make sure that we are clear, that what I read from Mr. Christie was in a, was in a text message, so if something was texted to me wrong, I read what was here, but just so there's, oh, there he is. Phew.
Mr. Gwinner.
Starting to sweat a little bit.
Just so you know, the report from Newen actually agrees with what you're saying. It says that that is not a turtle zone.
Right. But this gentleman, wherever he is, right there, said it was. He said, he said it was.
Information changes, sometimes people are not current.
Mr. Christie, the issue is whether the, the land that we're talking about, first, let me tell you that we moved on from that, so this is an open time for the public issue at the moment. And so I had read your correspondence to me, and there seems to be some misinterpretation of the word endangered species habitat versus turtle something, turtle crossing zone.
Turtle crossing.
Sorry, I never heard that before. So Mr. Gwinner says that it is not endangered land, I think.
Endangered species of the land.
Endangered species.
Using the State's mapping feature this afternoon, you can put on the natural heritage and endangered species layer that shows up, but what I believe is the same parcel, so that's, that's where that information comes from.
And so you're saying that it's improperly mapped, Mr. Gwinner?
I don't know what map he looked at, but the map that is, was supposed to be out in 2012, is now hanging on a wall out there next to the ladies' room. It's marked 2012. I just put it out now, so what he's looking at, I don't know. I mean, people just come in and say things off the top of their head without any research.
Is your map more current, Mr. Christie?
It's the State's mapping feature that we could probably pull up right now if we have the facilities.
Okay.
It's on the wall.
Okay.
I don't know what's different from that map.
Okay, so maybe we could look, just look into that. Thanks. Anybody else?
Yes, I think the town administration should look into the turtle issue.
Turtle crossing.
They do have turtle crossing signs, I'll have you know, that are pretty awesome, and they do have them in a lot of the newer construction areas, especially those that are built around swamps, brooks, and on hills. There is a big turtle behind my dad's house, just so you know.
I never realized there's such a sensitivity to this issue.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, we're ready.
[inaudible].
Just introduce yourself.
Not sure I am. My name is John Umel, I own Parsons Old Sawmill, Parsons Andrews Sawmill.
Okay.
We are removing the rolling vehicles. Anything on wheels? I'd like to have some clarification on registered things, can registered things stay on that lot or not? We don't have any rule in the town about whether you can have something registered on your land.
Charlie?
Registered can stay on the land.
Registered ones can stay on the land.
Typically, what you have is only one unregistered vehicle, but this is something your building inspectors, through the zoning should be reviewing, not us.
The, um, it's not in your bylaws that you can have a registered vehicle on your land. That's why the judge has said you can't have anything registered on your land.
Because it doesn't say you-
You've got to get it in court now, so.
It doesn't say in the bylaws?
If you agree on, you can have something registered on your land.
How many registered vehicles are we talking about?
The judge won't have nothing to say about it.
How many registered vehicles are we talking about?
Well, that, that, we don't have no specific number for how many registered vehicles we're, we're talking about. The, you can have so many per acre, you can have so many per house lot, whatever, whatever rule you want to make. Right now, I can't park my reg, supposedly, I can't park, after this is all over with, I'm not supposed to be able to park my registered vehicle on my land, but I allow my neighbor to park his vehicles on my land, so it'll be, I can't park my vehicles on my land, but my neighbor can park his vehicles on my land? I'm, we need it clarified.
Um-
Can I-
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the litigation that's going on with the town through the building inspector. What we really need to do is have the building inspector explain to us what's currently going on.
Okay. Mr. Gwinner?
Yeah, do.
Would you mind?
Yep.
Thanks.
We actually did a site visit, walked around the property yesterday, and he's trying quite a bit of cleanup. There's still, we have three or four trailers, I have a list what's left, and working on whether he's going to put up, he's actually working on getting a barn from Vermont to put up on the property to put everything under cover, through private permit, go through the, you know, the process. As far as other people's vehicles on his property, I don't recall any of that, just saying that the neighbor has actually vehicles on your property.
Yes. I can, I'll show you where they are.
Tom, can you come to the mic?
Can you come to the microphone?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yep. We did, we did actually, we walked around the whole property, and some of the neighbors are, it's evident that they're dropping different, you know, branches and their grass droppings and all that on his property. We did observe that, which is actually his right away from the other street.
Okay.
As far as any vehicles, I wouldn't know if they were, you know, the neighbors are, are his.
What is the average person allowed for registered vehicles on their property? Is there anything? I mean, how many could I have on my property for?
As long as they're registered.
There's no issue.
There's no issue.
There's no-
Can I have my neighbor's park on my property, as long as they're registered?
That would, I'd have to check with the police department on that. I don't, I don't know if they'd consider trespassing, or-
Yeah, we don't want to make a parking, yeah, we don't want to make a parking lot there, but-
Exactly, correct.
A few personal vehicles, I mean.
Mostly, these laws relate to unregistered vehicles, not registered vehicles.
Right, one unregistered vehicle, I believe.
Well, I had Russellville Road, you told him that he registered his-
They could keep them.
He could have them on it.
Absolutely.
But they were unregistered, so we weren't getting them off.
So, Mr. Umel, you're saying that the court's telling you that you can't keep any registered vehicles on your property?
That's what the, as far as I understand it to be, is that I'm not supposed to have any unreg, any registered vehicle on my property.
Because that, like, what would, where would you park your car if you were going to your property?
Well, I park it down at the town hall.
Well, I'm just saying, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, that, that, that ruling from the court, would it make any sense? Because if you were going there, you'd want to park your car there, so.
Well, we have, we have a thing with the picnic tables. I have five, five or six picnic tables now. They're saying that the picnic tables are not allowed now. Are picnic tables allowed, or are they not allowed?
I guess how many people are coming in your registered vehicles to eat at the picnic tables?
When you're, when you're, when you're dealing with a judge that's from Boston, and both the lawyers are from Boston, they really have no idea what grass looks like, the only place they've seen it in ten years. So it's classic.
Charlie?
Could, could we have Heather get us a copy of what the court order actually says?
Yeah.
Can I have five minutes?
You can have five.
Okay. So while she looks into that, I'm just going to skip ahead so we can see what the court order actually says, Mr. Umel, and try and get you an answer. Okay.
Yeah, so she'll be right back.
Just bear with us.
I hope you got a good point.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see. I'm trying, Mr. White.
Between turtles and registered cars.
Okay. I'm going to skip ahead without Heather in the room, hopefully I don't get in trouble. This is, we're on action item 4.1. On May 7th, 2015, the police chief forwarded reports along with the following recommendation to the town administrator. Please forward these reports to the Board of Selectmen for their review. As in the past, I recommend that at the very least, a warning letter be issued by the Board of Selectmen as licensing authorities to these establishments for documentation of violation of the rules of their alcohol licenses. So a letter was issued along with a copy of each of the report to the three establishments concerning serving of alcohol after closing. Tonight's meeting is merely for the purpose of discussion of these incidents. If further steps were wished to be taken, a hearing will need to be scheduled and held at another time. We will briefly read each report into the record and then ask the establishment for any comments. The board can take no action or may wish to schedule a show cause hearing for each incident. Now, just let me find them. Just for the record, I had authorized Heather to call town council this afternoon to have their opinion of this. their opinion of this. Says read a brief description of them, but they're awfully long.
Yeah, I've already read them, so I've...
Did you get them in your email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you've all read them?
But my question is one for Opa-OPa. Didn't we talk about that one already?
This is another one, I think.
This is another one.
Yeah. So I think what... Same one. So the issue was that the police saw people sitting at the bar after 1:00. The drinks had been served and people were sitting there. And I think the consensus of the police officer was that if the bar closes at 1:00, everyone needs to leave the bar at 1:00. So I'm going to read this into the record. This is from town council today. It says, "In my opinion, there is no statute or ABCC regulation that specifically requires customers to be off the premises before closing time. That needs to be done by a local regulation. The on-premise license statute, general law, chapter 138, section 12, states that the hours during which sales of alcohol can occur are fixed by the local licensing authority, the board of selectmen, but that owners and employees working can be there after hours. While customers on premises after hours is arguably covered by section 12, in my opinion, the only violation of section 12 that is enforceable under these facts is evidence of a sale after hours. In this case, there's no evidence that a drink was actually sold to a customer after 1:00, which would be a clear violation. If the board would like to address this type of situation, in my opinion, this may be done by writing regulations. For example, some licensing authorities have regulations that say, for example, that for a 1:00 AM closing time, last call shall be 12:30, drinks or glassware off the tables by 12:50, and no customers inside the licensed premise at or after 1:00. In my opinion, the board would need such a regulation in order to enforce the violation under the facts you provided, for example, customers inside with drinks on tables after 1:00 AM. Absent that, the ABCC on appeal would want evidence of an actual sale after closing hour." So although I don't think it's wrong that the police, you know, saw these problems, if there's not a regulation given by the board of selectmen or in writing, there really was no evidence of a sale after 1:00, just people drinking a drink that could have been purchased at 12:45. Charlie?
Based on what I heard and based what I read, I would move that the board put these reports into record and take no action.
All right. So I would, after talking with Heather about this, I would continue this for further research, but have Heather draft a policy as directed by town council.
Do we want to send anything to these establishments, just to let them know that it got to this point?
Well, I think they'd know because they got a letter already.
Okay.
So I mean, I don't think anybody did anything wrong at this point, but we need something in writing.
Point of order. He needs to stay in front of the microphone.
Stand at the microphone.
He needs to identify himself.
Tom Whitley. Okay? John's daughter was here from Greece with her fiancee. And she was leaving to go back the following day. John's wife has some serious health issues. So after they closed the restaurant and the bar, they sat down to talk about him, and that's what happened. You know, it's not... He knows now that he shouldn't have done that. And he let Officer Holmes in when he really didn't have to. He didn't have a warrant or anything. So it just seemed like he's a wreck over it, you know?
I think that if we move forward and draft a policy, then these kind of circumstances will be not happening.
I agree.
Less. So there's a motion. Is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion to put the record into...
Continue for further research and have Heather draft a policy as directed by council.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it for a conversation. Can we put a timeframe on getting that new policy in place so it doesn't drag out forever?
Sure. Can you start working on a new policy for the... We were talking about the alcohol stuff.
Yeah. The town council, Brian Riley, had already sent us a provision of something. And again, there may be something somewhere on the books. The problem is, we don't have documents in front of us that were well retained that go back 10 and 20 years on policies. That's the importance of creating one document. But we can definitely do that. They already gave us the template for it. We can see what other towns have on the books for it. Brookline has good ones, Boston Journal has good ones, and we can implement it right there. So we can have a policy ready for July 14th.
Thank you. I was going to say, can we have it ready for the next meeting? And is that faster?
That soon?
Yeah. It should only be approximately a document, not talking about all the rules and regulations for liquor. If we are, then it's going to be a year. But if it's just that one policy, we can have it drafted and ready to go.
Yeah. I think it's fair to the establishments so they know what to do.
But what I probably suggest is where you're adding a rule in reg that's on the books, we might want to have it in like a public hearing format concept so that at that point, all the bars around can actually come in and say if they have any input on it. Also, we can invite the police chief and any other public safety officials so that we really have a well-rounded policy when we move forward.
So can you do that, draft the policy by the 14th and have the public hearing, the meeting following?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that faster?
Have public meeting when?
The following meeting.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Feel free to go.
Would these actions, 5, 5.1, A, B, C, and D?
No. Yes. Yes. 4, 4.1, A, B, C, and D.
Well, they might have been...
Five. My numbers could be off.
Oh.
Mine say four.
You have a revised version.
I do?
Just for you.
Excellent.
That's why we never get to follow along.
Sorry. Okay. So, Mr. Quinlan?
Yeah, I think this is fascinating.
We have the ruling of the judge. Is that what this is?
Yes. Yes.
And so where in here does it say, remove all registered vehicles?
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah. Where am I?
Looks like page 16.
Oh, I'm on page 7. Now who's not following along?
That's who's on the other.
Page 16. Okay.
At the bottom?
At the bottom.
Ten of the vehicles on 57 former property are registered and include 1995 Mack tractor, 1984 low-bed trailer, 78 crane, so on and so forth. The defendant argued that they should be allowed to be stored any number of registered -- and I'm trying to say registered vehicles on the property. They argued that because zoning bylaw specifically limits the storage of unregistered vehicles, but says nothing about registered vehicles, this means that either there is no limit to the storage of registered vehicles on any property, or that one registered vehicle may be stored. This argument fails, and they cite a section of the zoning bylaw that basically, the way I'm reading it, sounds like it says you can only have one registered vehicle on your property.
Any use not listed shall be construed to be prohibited.
Therefore, the storage of registered vehicles is not an accessory of 57 former property principal use.
I actually was going to... I had asked permission to talk to town council. I almost thought it was a misprint because it's saying that, you know, unlimited registered, yet this would be one unregistered which is allowed.
I know. It's almost like...
That's what I was...
It's confusing.
My suggestion is get clarification.
Yes. Yeah, I had actually talked to Heather to get your permission to talk to town council. And it does clearly state, we made a list, and the few things that are left, the... He does say that the picnic tables do have to go. So it is a court order that the picnic tables do have to go.
You guys can change that, though. If you say they can stay, then you tell him you don't mind the picnic tables being there, and they'll accept it.
It becomes a town bylaw. We can't write the bylaw. We have to go to town meeting for that.
Town meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I wish we could.
Going to the town meeting for picnic tables.
Well, what it's really pointing out is the fact that our zoning bylaws need to be updated.
Well, this is... I don't understand what kind of country we're coming to when I bought the sawmill because of the place to work. And I bought other stuff there that was used for work. That's what I bought it for. I didn't want it to become the evil empire here. And...
Where does it inhale... Where in our bylaws does it say you can't have picnic tables?
It's in the list from the judge on page 7. It would be... I mean, I'm sorry. He lists the picnic tables 6 to 8.
And what's the reason for the picnic tables that they listed it? That they have to be removed?
I wasn't the one who walked out with the judge. He just...
Because the judge, the judge looked at this for five minutes, said this, this, and this, everything else has to go. He didn't... He doesn't know what a picnic table is, apparently, or a planer.
What do you use the picnic tables for?
Picnics?
Sounds like a good...
To eat and...
Eat and ones that you made that you're going to sell.
Must be a group.
I was understanding that the judge actually walked the property. He actually physically walked the property and made this list.
What... The list that you've got is one that my son made up to let him know everything that he had, because his lawyer told him to do that. Then the judge went and picked out three things he could keep and said everything else has to go. The planer is...
This is what the judge says. Has to go.
He's got the planer on here and the saw and the building.
The original complaints were...
The saw, the saw is, comes under...
I'm sure they thought it was storage because there were so many of them, you know?
It's protected.
The original complaint regarded the multiple vehicles. Am I correct?
I believe so, yes.
The multiple vehicles. And now it's scattered into something else that we never meant it to be, I don't think.
Okay.
I think from looking at the list, when they did, looked at the list, the town was trying to get the place cleaned up. They saw 6 to 8 picnic tables saying, "You can't possibly use them. They're just being stored there along with a lot of other stuff." I think if there were just 6 to 8 picnic tables on the property, nobody would have complained, but it got lumped in with everything else. That's the way I take it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So does the board... I mean, do you want to disregard the picnic tables? Or do you want to...
We can't. We have a court order saying...
But there's nothing we can do about it.
The only thing we can do is file a motion in court again to ask the judge to remove some of this from the list.
How much does that cost?
Yeah, exactly.
We had that chance the last time he went to court, to not fight every single thing. And she fought it, and that's why he's here. I mean, that's what it sounds like.
Well, I think we need to have some clarification about the registered vehicles. And at this point, you know, unfortunately, the list, the point was to get the property cleaned up. And we had a lot of time to do that. We gave you a lot of time to do that, and now we're at this point. So although I don't necessarily agree with the picnic tables at this moment, I think the bigger issue is let's figure out the registered vehicle issue, and we'll have to move forward from there.
So if... What I would like to see is the vehicle, is what you want is gone, then I'm getting rid of that. What I want protected is the sawmill and the...
I think that we're past that point at this point, Mr. Umel. This has been going on for a long time. And in order for those things to be changed, we have to go back into court, like Charlie said, and file another motion. And unfortunately, I can't imagine that's going to happen.
The saw is supposed to be protected on the agricultural.
And so the judge can make those decisions as they see fit.
You can file an appeal, forcing the town to go back to court.
Well, I'm not looking to force the town to do anything.
I know, but we're both caught behind the same rock.
Right.
We all have our hands tied because the judge has this order.
Right.
We have to follow that. I have talked to town attorney counsel, I believe, last month regarding another project, and just mentioned this briefly. And we, you know, we do have to stick by this, abide by what the order is.
Okay.
So...
So we need to clarify the bylaw too about registered vehicles. That should go on a to-do list, Heather.
So if the saw isn't gone, then you're going to start taking, you're going to take the line.
If it's not, if you're not in compliance with this order from the court...
You're going to take the line.
Like, all we can do...
I'm going to sign it over now, can I, or... Thanks for talking.
Thank you for coming. Are you all set?
Yes. So what I'll do is try to get a hold of town council.
That'd be great.
Couple days. Because that part does seem...
Funny.
Should have had the unregistered.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to move on to mine says for, after open time for the public continued business discussion and adoption of board of selectmen policies. At this point, we had talked about, talking about some of them today. I would say we should take the suggestion of our... I really don't like the word retreat because it reminds me of going to church, which I don't mind doing, but I would prefer to say working meeting. So if we could come up with, if Heather could get in touch with somebody, a consultant or whoever that person was, that could come and guide us through that working meeting, that would be helpful.
We need, wherever we do it, we need to do it where we're not going to be bothered by a lot of people coming in.
Maybe the upstairs meeting room.
I would say away from town hall.
I would, too.
Post it somewhere else. Well, that's fine, too. So we can...
You don't get any work done.
But you have a good time.
I don't think that would be a very good idea. So we're going to, I guess, at this point, does the board wish to pass over the BOs policies and figure out a time and a meeting?
I think that's a great item for the agenda.
Okay. Thanks. Next is ECAT. Infrastructure upgrades are needed. ECAT has asked that we upgrade our equipment so that it syncs with theirs. Before I keep reading, does that involve new microphones?
Microphones are separate, but as soon as we get to fiscal year 16 tomorrow, I will order them.
Okay, thank you. Cost, the cost to sync our equipment with theirs is $12,000. The balance in the account that is solely for PEG funding is $58,707. We've already paid the renewal fee from this, so we will have the whole balance here. ECAT has solicited three bids and is in compliance with 30B, the lowest bid. And the company preferred by ECAT is Integrated Solution Systems at $12,000. So I would need a motion to allow Heather to move forward and issue a PO for ISG in the amount of $12,000 to be taken from PEG access funds for fiscal year 16.
Can I make the motion?
Is there a second?
A second for...
Any other discussion?
I've got a question. What are we getting for this again?
They're going to sync our equipment with their equipment over...
So they're upgrading our equi... See, the equipment that Tim is currently accessing? They're going to bring us into the 20th century so that they're no longer operating with a Windows versus a DOS. They need to be all on the same page, so we'll call this the Windows conversion.
So it's software and hardware?
Yeah. It's a combination of both to sync the system.
Okay. Thanks.
So there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the town cellphone policy. The board last visited this topic a while ago. The base question is whether in those departments which require cellphones, do we wish to establish a policy that allows them to submit for reimbursement for these phones, or whether we wish to keep them on the town plan and separate from personal use?
I've got a little experience...
Some hems and haws over a cellphone.
Well, yeah. It's a big deal. I've got some experience with going through this, and to be honest with you, I don't have a good answer. But one of the things we had looked at is whether you give a stipend to the person, and by doing that, and they're accepting the stipend, their personal cellphone then becomes a cellphone that they have to answer and they have to use for work. The issue with that, the question came up, is is that information on their private cellphone still public information or not? So you've got to be careful there. And the other side is, well, we'll supply a cellphone at whatever base level we need, and they can use it also for personal if they choose. But again, anything personally put on that phone is subject to the public records law. And if you're texting your son, or your daughter, or your wife, or whoever, that could become public records. So it's dicey. Some people didn't want to have, either way, they took a separate phone, so you've got two phones hanging on your belt. So I don't have an answer to it, it's just a very complicated question.
I think that keeping them on the town plan, having a separate phone, is probably the, I would say, the better way to go.
For us, yeah.
For us. You know, then, you know, someone is let go, or, you know, you need someone's phone, you say, "Give me the phone. It's my phone, I want my phone back." Not, "I need your personal phone," and then there's an argument over that. I think for all intents and purposes, in the town of Southampton, probably just leaving the system the way it is now would be the best choice.
Curiosity question. How many phones are there?
How many phones are there? We went through this before.
We went through this before already once. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but-
I want to say it's like eleven, or-
The Board of Health has a phone. The building inspector currently carries personal and professional phone. Professional phone doesn't work, so usually it's his personal phone that he gets the business calls. Randall has the same situation. There's several foremen who have the same situation. Wire department finally just-
So they have a town phone, but the town phone doesn't work?
A town phone-
Can they get an upgrade?
What?
Well, they, the problem is, we, one, signed on to a plan for AT&amp;T, and we'd signed on it when they had those lovely foot phones, half a decade ago, and a lot of their technology is out of date. So the problem is you can, yes, you can sign on, but you remember nowadays, people don't communicate just by cellphone. They communicate text message, email. For instance, a lot of the building commissioners' correspondence he has with different builders is actually by text message, because it's easier. They say, "Hey, I'm here, can I, can you come by in 10 minutes? Be right there," and-
So we should upgrade the phones to smartphones, so they can text, and if they need to get the internet and all that. I mean, personally, I don't know what my two sons sound like, because all we do is text. I mean, it was just, that's what people do nowadays, you text.
That's the key, huh? Give your kid a cellphone.
(laughing)
Just kidding.
But I, I think it's worth, because we can get, we can get some great plans with some great pricing.
Right. I mean, I think if that's going to be our policy, we at least need to give them something that works. Otherwise, what's the point?
Exactly.
So how does the board wish to proceed?
I'd say get some pricing on the phones and upgrading.
And keep the, and keep the policy as town-
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but I think we should start to keep a comprehensive list of who has these.
Right. Well, if you want an upgrade, you're going to find out exactly, if you wanted a phone, you're going to find out exactly the last one.
Yeah, because you shut them all off and, or transfer the numbers in.
Right. So, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we supply smartphones with the proper features to the personnel in town that can have a, can prove that it's a job-related need, and the town pays for them.
Can we, can we amend, can we amend it to whoever has a cellphone currently, not whoever needs one, because people might come out of the, I mean, if they have one now, then, you know, it's necessary, but I-
Current employees.
You, right, current employees.
Well, I, I don't know, I want to say current employees that have one, because there may be current employees who don't need one, and there may become a current employee that needs one and that has to justify it.
I think that when we did the list, which I'm sure you have somewhere, Heather, it has every person who has a cellphone, and I'm pretty sure the department head knew who the cellphone belonged to, and there wasn't, there wasn't an issue with somebody else needing one that, that didn't need one.
But are, are we going to control who needs one, or is it up to the department head to decide within their budget if somebody needs one? And even if they need a floating one, for instance, that people are on call or something?
I think so.
I don't, I don't want to sit there and say, "Joe can have one, but Mary can't." I think it's up to the departments to do it appropriately.
It should be the department head.
Yeah.
Who pays for the cellphones? The town or each department?
Uh, each department has to budget their own expenses for whatever the expense is.
Yeah. And we, we should be able to monitor it, and if there's an issue, abuse of it, then weigh in on it.
I, I would recommend, though, centralizing them all to one plan, instead of every department having their own plan. The other problem is, which we've come across recently, is that if someone leaves who has one of these phones, and they have the number and they've been using it for so many years, it's become part of their identity, now you have to get it transferred out. So you have to get department head cooperation, you have to get signatures, it's easier if it's a central piece.
Right.
I would, I would say Heather should investigate a plan that has shared minutes and, and shared data and shared texting. I mean, where I work, we have, I want to say, over 400 phones that are on a shared plan, and it's saved us a tremendous amount of money. And, you know, I think by controlling it out of the administrator's office, that would cut the costs down.
So can, can I suggest that Heather reach out to all departments and assure us that the number of phones they have is what they need right now? If they think they need something different, could they tell us they need something different, and then move forward with looking at a shared plan and getting everybody on the same plan?
Yes.
Any-
I, I amended to add all that to it. How's that?[645.83][645.83](laughing)
So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion?
It's okay, John, if you see Emily's fingers fall off because she's typing too fast.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we're past the alcohol stuff, we're on to the annual reappoint, reappointments for appointed boards, committees, and representatives. The following appointments are being put forth for reappointment for fiscal year sixteen. The appointments will take effect on July 1st, once sworn in, and will go until July 30, excuse me, June 30th, of whichever year is indicated below, or on the list that Heather's going to read. The Conservation Commission has asked to be heard at an upcoming meeting to discuss the number of members. Appointments have been emailed to all relevant parties, and if no response was received, it is presumed that the list below is correct. The appointments are as read by Heather.
And before I read those, just to assure everyone here, the town clerk and I have been working on changing the certificate of appointment, so it has additional information on it. It also has the opportunity, John, at the bottom, to say, "I accept this appointment," or "I do not accept this appointment." So should you receive an appointment for a position you wish not to serve, John, you can check off "I do not accept" and mail it back. But otherwise, it will help us track things a little bit easier. All right, I'm going to go relatively fast here, only for everyone's sanity purpose, but here we go. Ambulance coordinator, John Workman, 2016. Animal inspector, Kara Pease, appointed by the state, 2016. Building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, Russell Ducham Jr. as an alternate, 2016. Building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, Thomas Quinlan, 2016. Capital Improvement Committee, Bill Colito, is 2018. Capital Improvement Committee, Roger Ball Jr., 2018. Civil Defense Deputy Director. We have David Silvernail and John Workman, and as a suggestion for an alternate as a new appointment, we have Don Snyder. All those are 2016. Conservation Commission-
When you say recommendation, do you-
Uh, that means that Charlie submitted that one, and he'd like to see Don Snyder as the alternate.
And the reason being, these are overlapping responsibilities, so if he's going to be the emergency manager, he should be the civil defense director also. They overlap with their responsibilities, so it makes sense not to have him in there.
Okay. Can you slow down just a bit?
Conservation Commission, Bob Barkham, 2018. Counsel in Aging, the following, Constance Barron, Gladys Phyllis, Carl Fiala, and Carol Goulet, all 2018. Oh, hold on, I might have skipped one, I did. See, my lines are crossing, sorry. Just the first two are counsel in aging, for Constance and Gladys. The next three are cultural counsel. We have Carl Fiala, Carol Goulet, and Nancy Dumont, 2018. We have to double-check Nancy Dumont, because I think she's on her last term already. Emergency Management Director, we have Don Snyder. The assistant is John Workman, both are 2016. Emergency Response Coordinator, Don Snyder, 2016. FRTA delegate, we have me until 2016, but if someone else would like to do that instead, I would love for them to participate in the FRTA up in Greenfield every three months. It's only a 40-minute ride during rush hour times on both sides. Charlie, FRTA?
You are retired now.
Hey, aren't you, you're, aren't you already working in an area close by?
Sheffield.
That's, that's got to be somewhere.
Works for the rest of us.
I, I will be ending up in Sunderland eventually, but not now.
So does that mean you want to reconsider in three months? So there's various appointments that are made by the fire chief. I will not be reading those out loud unless the board wishes me to. They were submitted on the agenda, on the revised one at the end of last week.
May I, may I ask a question, see, we're talking fire department. Liz, do you mind?
No, I don't mind.
On the very top, it says ambulance coordinator. Is there a town regulation bylaw or something that establishes an ambulance coordinator?
Didn't, didn't the people doing the reorganization over there require, I thought I had read that somewhere in an email, that he needed to establish an ambulance coordinator?
But the ambulance coordinator is designated by the fire chief to oversee the ambulance. That'd be, that'd be a fire personnel designated by the fire chief, not by the board of selectmen. I'm just not sure, that's the reason I'm asking.
Do you want to hold off on that first appointment and come back to it another day?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Highway Superintendent, Randall Kemp, 2016. Historical commission, there's three appointments. The first one is a new person. We have Elise Bernier-Feeley, then we have Ellen, or, I'm sorry, she is on for 2018. Then we have Ellen DeBruyne and Christina Madsen. Then we have Inspector, Building Inspector, we've already done Tom Quinlan, I believe. Inspector of Electrical, we have the alternate Ronald Byrd Nars. Our Electrical Inspector, James Fisher. Inspector of Plumbing and Gas as an alternate, Glenn Helket, and Tom Sears as the main Inspector of Plumbing and Gas. Those are all 2016 appointments. PVPC Commissioner is appointed by the planning board, and that's Paul Fargel. The PVPC Commissioner alternate the board of selectmen appoints, and Hank Barton would like to remain in that position for the time being, and that expires 2016. Police Chief, David Silvernail, 2016. Police Department, there's various appointments here. I'm just going to read down the names, and we need to triple-check with the fire, with the police chief on these, because we know some folks have left over time. David Latour, David Neal, Eric Woico, Ian Illingsworth, Jeffrey Silver, John-
Silver left the department.
Huh?
Jeff Silver left the department.
Thank you. Jana Reche, Kelly Bannister, Kevin Nichols, Mark Rober, Martin Cook, Michael Goyette, Philip Lannier, Robert St. Martin, Ryan Holmes, Scott Gove, Scott Schoster Jr., Stephen Jeffers, and Zachary Bouzier.
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 Bouzier?
Was I close? Okay.
It's like Budrewick, okay?
They're not even in the same, you know what I'm saying? Okay. Veterans Grave Officer, we have Richard Ferrari, 2016. Veteran Service Agent, we have Jerry Paquette, 2016. ZBA, Ryan Gialler, 2018.
Is that all of them?
That's, that's all I have for, either new or reappointments, because everyone else doesn't expire in 15.
I would accept a motion to make the appointments as read.
I'll make them.
Can I make the motion pending her clarification of the department's that she, she was going to check?
Sure. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a conversation about telephones, again, regular telephones, a change in service and methods. So Heather has met with the company so far, and can continue to meet with others to look at switching our phones over to a service that is based through the internet. This would save on phone bills, create better connectivity between departments, allow for, allow more voicemail features, provide access to voicemail out of the office, and provide a central phone number to the town call, to the town to call for information. So really, is, what we need to do is decide if we want Heather to continue looking into this, or keep the phone system the way that it is. What's the potential cost savings?
Uh, it's, we're still on figuring that piece out right now. It's either going to break even or be slightly less. The biggest piece is figuring out how many phones we actually have in various locations. One of the benefits of switching to this type of phone is the fact that the phone itself holds the line. So I can unplug my phone from my office, I can bring it in here, plug it in, we use my phone line, and we're good to roll. It also doesn't plug into a phone line jacket, plugs into an internet.
So given that we have such internet trouble, would this-
Our internet actually isn't too bad at all now. We've gone up, and we're working on, apparently, the cable broadband institute's been installing fiber optic cables. So things, I think, will progressively get better. I think we're now at like 75 megabytes per second, as opposed to our original 4.5.
So the phone, the phone system would not slow things down for you?
Um, we talked to the folks about it, who actually come with it, and they said it uses such little amount of that piece, it's not really that big of deal. The major costs come into renting each of the phones, so the basic phones are $6 per phone, per month. The lines, all that stuff comes with, it's a basic package, so you'd get all your voicemail, you'd be able to actually have your voicemail emailed to you and get an audio file, or a text message with an audio file if you're out of the office. Again, you can travel with the phone, so you could bring the phone into here and have an instant conference phone piece. It gives you the ability to actually intercommunicate amongst town hall people, so it brings back the concept of AIM, instant messaging with AOL, that you can actually see what's happening and correspond directly with them. It allows you to utilize internal extensions. It also gives you different opportunities where you can actually have the phone call transferred to your cellphone. And you can also call out on your phone line on your cellphone.
And this is all going to be the same amount as what we're paying now?
So it's, it's give or take the same amount piece. Always remember that, you know, right now, we're paying for long distance, we're paying for the few phones that still have call-out voicemail services and the like. The other thing that it comes down to is it, it depends on how many lines we have to maintain for the police station because of the 911 piece and all their other emergency calls. And we also have to look at how many fax lines we actually need, because either we'd have to maintain the line for the faxing, or we'd have the option of looking at online options.
So I guess my recommendation would be, let's not sign any contracts, but if you could get us some sort of cost analysis and, you know, more information, that would be helpful.
I, I looked into that volp also. The two key things I found were if the internet goes down, the phones are down. If the power goes off, the phones are down. The regular telephone lines use a separate power source, so they're always up or, up a lot more often. So that's the only two issues. So if the power of the internet goes down, we're, we're dead. And like you said, the police have to have, can't have that, and the fire can't have that. They've got to maintain the hard-wired lines.
But I'm, I'm not sure, John, on the whole power thing, I thought he had said something pertaining to that, but I can get you a full report next time.
I'm, I'm just looking into it for, for my house, and I looked into it where we work, and we have volp for thousands of phones, but when the power goes down, unless you have a UPS or something on it, battery-operated, but those are the two big things.
The other thing with volp is the extension numbers. If you remember, the extension numbers were sometimes up to seven digits.
They, they said in this case, it's only the last four of the phone number.
Verify that, because they said that to us years ago, and the next thing we ended up with is seven digits to-
The whole number.
Yeah. You had to actually dial the main number, and then you had to dial a seven-digit number to get the party you wanted in the building.
Well, I'm not opposed to spending some more time doing research, but extensive.
One, one other question, I'm sorry, I let you stop, go ahead.
I'm done.
Oh, sorry. Did we look at, did we call our phone company to find out if there's, they can do something better for us? Features as well as cost?
Um, we've been working with Verizon over time on this piece, and we already get the government contracts, so there's not a lot of leeway they have on that.
Okay, thanks.
George?
No, I was just going to say, basically what he said.
Okay.
What John said. At least with Verizon, circuit, I'm talking about telephones, but Verizon circuit is still live.
Okay.
They've removed, I noticed, all of the boxes along the road, some of these were battery-powered, like batteries, it went down, we lost service. But I just have regular service, of course, my, I work for Verizon, AT&amp;T, and several service. When everything goes down, like John says, you pick the phone up and it's still dial it home.
Right? Okay.
That doesn't apply when the computers go down, and I had a call the other day from my server, my phone doesn't work. Does your computer work? I'll check if it's down. It, it looks like it's a cost-saving thing, but it's-
Maybe not. It's a headache.
Okay. So is there a motion from the board to have Heather continue researching, or otherwise?
Oh, I'd have a research, yeah.
I need a motion.
Do you?
Yeah.
I make a motion that Heather does further research.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the Governor's Community Compact Best Practices. Heather has emailed out a link to the Governor's Community Compact information. At this time, does the board wish to enter into a community compact with the state, and if so, for which best practice? The DLS recommended this to us. It's for two years at no cost, and allows state services to the town for us to implement best practices. And some of those things can be for education, financial management, or information technology.
There's no downside that I'm aware of.
Nope.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I'll make a motion that we sign the agreement for the Governor's Community Compact Best Practices, is that?
We just have to pick a best practice. Do you have the list in front of you, Liz?
No, I only wrote down a few-
You don't have it attached there?
No.
Yeah, I don't have it either. I thought we got to take advantage of all of it.
Oh, wait a minute.
I think you do.
Well, there's education best practices, and then there's-
And then there's individual ones within. So if the board has a selection of which category they want, perhaps we could just read the four or five options.
So here's the categories: education, energy and environment, financial management, housing and economic development, information technology, regionalization and shared services, transportation and citizen safety. That's it.
We can only pick one?
You can, you can only pick one. Remember, this isn't going to be a lack of work, it's going to be more like work-intensive, where we come up with the direction we wish to go with the policy, we get support from the state to do so, and we get possible benefits down the road, whether they develop grants that we are now eligible for, we get additional points when we apply for specific grants. So it doesn't hurt us to enter into it, but it is going to consume some staff hours somewhere along the lines to do this. Mind you, we develop our own policies and practices as we've been going anyway, so if we can line it up.
I would, if I may, I would suggest regionalization. It's something we skirt around all the time. Maybe we need to put a little more focus on it. Why are we doing it with Westfield with the animal control?
And I was thinking either financial management or regionalization, so...
I was thinking financial management.
So perhaps this is something that the board wishes to take further time to consider. There is no deadline to sign up for this, but perhaps folks...
Did you email this list to folks?
Hmm, it's another retreat, Charlie.
Could you email this list to folks so that they can take a look at it and...
I think it was in the email link I had sent before, but I'll try to...
Could you resend it?
Find that, yes.
So we can pass over that and come back to it after everyone's had a chance to look at the list?
Well, again, depending on when the retreat is, because at the retreat, we want to kind of spec out where we want to go with certain aspects of the town, and that may be a good one, if it's going to be within a reasonable amount of time.
Right. I'm just saying, pass over so that we can choose a best practice. We don't want to choose on the spot. Okay. Next is the purchase order policy for fiscal '16. Heather will be meeting with Donna and Vicky next week to finalize a purchase order policy for fiscal '16 to present at their department head meeting next Thursday. The current policy requires a purchase order for any purchase over $500. Does the board of selectmen have a preference on the minimum purchase to trigger a purchase order? Chapter 30B kicks in at $10,000. Some communities require PO for everything, and others vary depending. So does the board want to require a minimum, or leave it up to Donna, Vicky, and Heather?
I think there should be different standards for different departments, because I think that's a pain for, say, like, the highway department when they go to buy things. Most things are over 500. Same thing with the police department. What happens if he has a problem with a cruiser? Most likely, if you have a car problem, it's probably going to be over 500. So I think there should be different stipulations for the different departments. Because obviously, my department isn't going to go and just spend $600 on something, you know? But the highway, I bet you he does it all the time. And that's a pain to keep doing POs for what, every bag of sand he buys?
The large departments haven't had a problem with it for fire and highway. I get POs from them two to three times a week right now.
And I hear it's a pain.
For anything excess $500. Most of them require, their companies that they're purchasing an item for over $500 are requiring the PO anyway. And the fire department was doing his own POs before we adopted the process, where everything he did, he tracked it with a PO. It, you know, some things in life are more difficult. It's just the way it is, you know? Sometimes it just takes a little bit longer to do things, but it's a better tracking mechanism and also gives more accountability. And if you purchase something today for $500 and you didn't get it in next month, and we're already in July, we already know that we need to account for that and encumber for that amount. The numbers we're currently tossing around right now, so the board knows between myself and Vicky and Donna, is about 2,500 is what we're looking at. Because we felt 500 allotted departments, the bigger departments, it was, you know, more than they probably want to do, but they got in the habit of doing them, which is a good thing. But if we did go to something like 2,500, we wanted to the point where you can't just buy your item, then come back and get your purchase order. You have to get the purchase order first. We'll call over to the vendor, say, here's the purchase order number, and that number must be on the bill for it to be paid.
John and Charlie?
Were you specifying on the POs, the company but not the items? In other words, say I wanted to open up a PO for $1,000 to, I don't care, some paper company, only because I know over the course of the year, I'm going to be buying $200 worth of paper one time, $100 worth of paper another time? Or were you requiring the POs to be issued every time a transaction took place?
So the answer was, it depends. Theoretically, you could do it either way. The problem with doing is the blanket PO is they were having trouble in the accountant's office figuring out if it was partial or full payment, and then I was having POs open all over the place, which meant I had to go back to simply, even for myself, I have to do several POs because I have the stuff for the building. I have legal expenses, I have all this fun jazz. So every time I go to do a PO, even though it's for the entire year, I was having to do individual pieces because it was too complex upstairs.
So the answer is, a PO is issued every time an expense is anticipated?
Yes.
Okay.
We were looking specifically, when Vicky and I spoke today, at 700 accounts, which are the expense accounts, at the accounts that are issued, I think they're called 30, something along the line of 30 pertaining to when you have like a capital expense that you were granted funding for. And the same thing goes for most of the CPC funding. That will capture most of our big things.
So does the board want to pick a number, or do you want the people who are in charge of the POs to pick the number?
I guess I've got a question. I mean, personally, blanket purchase orders, I think are good, but, so are you saying that any item under $2,500 doesn't need a purchase order? So all these other items, which I'm going to assume are most things we buy on a day-to-day basis, don't need a purchase order?
Yeah, so, two examples. So if you're the highway department, you went to go get a couple tires and the total was $900, I'm not going to see it. If you're the fire department, you ordered radio equipment, something or another in the past week or so, and it's $3,300, then I'm going to see it.
Do we have a set limit where equipment turns into capital equipment that we have to amortize and track?
Well, we have never done a fixed asset study, which we're going to do in August. So hopefully, when the auditors come in, they'll give us some guidance on that piece. At this point, we don't have a specific policy to that manner, but if the board wishes to work on developing something as we move forward...
We could do so at a retreat.
Yeah, I mean, equipment should be tagged, and we know where everything is, so it doesn't disappear, of course. I mean, personally, I think 2,500 is a lot. I was going to go with the $500 thought, but that's me.
Isn't that what it's at now?
It's currently...
And that's part of the problem for, you know, I know Vicky has voiced her concerns about, you know, a PO all the time, and raising the amount would kind of, you know, take that pressure up.
Well, the other problem we ran into with the PO is a PO, having a PO system is only as good as it is enforced.
Right.
So the problem is, you know, if I'm issuing POs and someone submits a bill upstairs for $2,000, but no one tells me that it was submitted without a PO, I can't enforce because I don't know about it. So if you give them a high enough number that everyone knows, it's very clear, everyone's on the same page...
I say leave it up to the people that have to deal with it every day. And if they've been using 500 for about a year, and they think that, and they, right, and they think that changing it to a higher number, then try it. And if that doesn't work, then you move it again, but, you know...
I guess the overarching question is, are purchases going unaccounted for, or just buying stuff that shouldn't be? And if they went through a system, they wouldn't be purchased? Or are all the purchases valid for the departments?
I think if they're not, they're going to be. You know, people are trying to get away with stuff, but...
Yeah. I mean, does Vicky see something that if she thinks it's inappropriate, she kicks back to you, Heather, or to the department head?
Was there one?
I...
Oh, the kickback's not the word I want to use.
Oh, that came through my side.
Right.
And that was simply because I got a copy of the invoice.
I think the fact of the matter is, is there has to be checks and balances. And if you don't have this, then what system is in place? You know, even if it's not being abused, at least there's a system to track things. I mean, I don't know any other business that doesn't use purchase orders. And so the problem here is that people don't like it because it's something they haven't had to do before, when in reality, what we need to do is make sure that people are being fiscally responsible, and whether that's filling out an extra piece of paper or not, that's what our job is to do. So my own opinion is to leave it up to, you know, Heather, Vicky, and Donna. And if the $500 wasn't working and they want to try $2,500, then I would say, let's try it and come back to it if we find that there's trouble with it. But it can be an open-ended conversation at this point until something works.
I think they should reach out to the larger departments and get their feedback on it, too.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I don't think it's best practices have a very high limit or high minimum, because we can't track anything that way, but...
So are you suggesting maybe $1,000?
I suggested 500, but, you know, again, you don't want to slow down the town, but...
You don't want to micromanage the departments either. They already know what their budget is and how much they can spend.
Yeah. Yeah, the system for a purchase order is to hopefully encumber the funds upfront, knowing that you have them, and then when the invoice comes in, you've got a PO number that you can attach to the invoice and pay it, and it goes smoothly through the process.
Right.
It's not to get an invoice and do a purchase order after the fact. You know, that just makes more time, so...
One thing, one thing we have done to try to make POs much easier for folks is it's on an Excel spreadsheet. Everyone, once they have it once, can actually save certain fields, so they have all their own contact information. A lot of people are doing POs for the same vendor, so theoretically, they can have multiple sheets. All they're changing is the quantity, the shipping, and what the product is, and they're done.
Well, why wouldn't you have a blanket purchase order for $2,000, $3,000, $5,000 to the lumberyard, and they bring the receipt back with the purchase order number on it? And as long as there's funding left in that purchase order, you pay the invoice.
I think that's going to be a question that goes to the accountant's office, because they're the ones responsible for processing the information. So if there's trouble trying to figure it out, or having trouble tracking what's open, what's closed, and partial, and some of it, as you said before, John, just comes down to training and getting everyone on the same page, knowing where to write the PO, partial, full, what have you.
So could we send some suggestions to that meeting next Thursday that, A, we think maybe $2,500 is too high, but maybe $500 is too low? And can we look into blanket purchase orders? And can we, is there any other suggestions that we would send from our board? And then let them come back to us again?
I'd actually let them establish what they want to start with. Give them our suggestions and let them establish it. If they pick 2,000, or 1,500, or 1,000, or whatever, let them, they're the ones dealing with it on a day-to-day basis anyways.
Anybody else? Does anybody want to make a motion on how to move forward?
I moved that we allow the, what do we call the committee?
Just say Donna, Vicky, and Heather.
Donna, Vicky, and Heather Committee to establish the threshold for the PO. And to review it for the next six months and see if it's a best practice.
Communicate it effectively to all departments?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, because I've got a question. Are you asking also for them to put a simple policy in place for the use of this? So everybody can be aware of it and send out?
Yes.
We did one last year as well. We just have to update and change it. And I think, as we discussed earlier, the conversation's currently going to what accounts it affects, which I think will make folks' lives easier on certain things.
Yeah, I think it's always clearer when something's in writing and everybody has the same one.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a subdivision plan in review for the Woodmar Estates on 89 Pleasant Street. We received a subdivision plan for Woodmar Estates. Where's that word come from? Woodmar Estates. Does the board of selectmen have any concerns on this to send back to the planning board? My only concern is that it's clogging up my beautiful Pleasant Street, but... And we need to make sure there's effective communication with the highway and the water department, because we don't really have the water at this, you know, the water supply to continue building like we are. But other than that, I don't have any concerns. Anybody else? So does the board feel comfortable sending this back to the planning board?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any others, oh, second, sorry.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're on to signatures. We're passing over the PCF for the first PCF. Next, we have the PCF. Do you have them, Heather?
Oh, sorry. I'm still looking at the subdivision.
We're passing over the one for the health agent, Geraldine Swanson, to change from temporary to permanent. It's waiting on approval from the personnel policies and procedures board, which was a lengthy discussion. Next is the PCF for Ron Lauren. This position is a health agent for 10 hours per week. It's been approved by the PQB and signed off by the accountant.
And will we sign off on it?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heather, can you send out the new PCF form to everybody? Because I know that it went out once, but...
We can send it out. It's on the common drive, and it's also physically available in physical format for the new PCF and PRF in the break room, right next to the mail machine on the left-hand side with the sign above it that says Personnel and Personnel Forms.
So chances are, the people that need that aren't watching right now, so could you send out a memo that says exactly where you can find it, and please use the new one so that we don't have any more trouble?
Yes.
Thanks. We are passing over the PRF for the Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator. It's waiting for approval from the Finance Committee. Next, we have the vacation payout for fiscal '15, fiscal '16. It's a modification of $1,230.96. There was a clerical error in the last approval for the payout for Joe Slattery. This corrects the error. May I have a motion to sign?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is motion to sign, but do you have something I need to sign?
There's a sheet of paper I sent over to Shannon.
Oh, I sent it back, because I thought it was attached. Sorry. Oh, great. Anywhere under the last time I signed it?
Uh, anywhere on the forms, fine.
We have a one-day application for, we have an application for a one-day wine and malt license at Conan Park for a party on Saturday, July 11th, from 2:00 p.m. to dusk. This is a request for a one-day license by Donna Whitley. I would accept approval contingent upon the completion of the application and submission of payment. Vicky's, excuse me, Donna's on vacation, but asked to have this put on the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a transfer, a modification of a car dealer's license. This is a request to change Traska's dealer's license from an LLC to a DBA. The owners are not present. The, a DBA is in the process of being filed with the clerk's office.
And I have the letter from Mr. Tarkas as well, and also, I do have the DBA from the clerk's office completed. It says, June 29th, "To whom may concern, I'm writing to request that my used auto dealer license for Tarkas Service Center, Inc. be amended to Matthew J. Tarkas, DBA, Tarkas Service Center. Corporation is being dissolved for June 30th, 2015. I'm enclosing copy of the new business certificate, noting the change along with a copy of the current license, number 14431C MV2, dated March 30th of this year. I want to stress I'm not applying for a new used auto dealer license just for a name change on the existing license, and that the business will continue to be located at the same address on 429 College Highway. I want to thank, that's, well, thank the town clerk and Heather for all their help in the past few weeks, blah, blah, blah."
So I would accept a motion to allow, to allow the change for Tarkas from LLC to a DBA?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have an issue there.
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. A long time ago, there was an issue relative to the amount of cars they were storing there. And before we take and sign this permit, I would prefer having the building inspector check to make sure that he's in compliance.
One of the problems we're going to run into on that, Charlie, and this is the problem we have in all the car dealer licenses. Number one, I don't have the formal Form 43 filled out for any of the car dealers' licenses in any of their files. I'm working on putting that together in the next week or so and getting it out to all four or five of them to have it filled out. Number two, one thing we do not have on file for these folks is a lot plan, including a number of approved cars by the building commissioners. Never been done, I don't have it. I started doing it in December with one other car dealer. These do not have it. It was never something that was kept in the files. I understand the concern, however, the problem is, we don't have it for anyone at this point. It's something we can easily do. It will take about a month between putting the Form 43s together, visiting the dealers, having each of them fill them out, making sure that we have bonds on file for each of these, because I'm not sure we do, and then also making sure that for all of them, we have a lot plan and a specified number by the building commissioner based on the size of the lot and the area and the full description. There's only one car dealer's license right now that I find is actually almost fully complete, and that's the notion that the license itself explains the square footage of the area, the buildings on the property, and also the number of cars allowed on the premises. Does that help?
No, it just proves my point of why we shouldn't be issuing a permit.
But I think it would be prejudicial to withhold it from him, where we haven't required it in the past, and also, we treat everyone else the same. I think, once we switch it...
Then you can administer it upon...
But, I mean, I think right now, we're saying, we don't, we don't think you have, we think you have too many cars, but we don't know how many cars you should have, because we've never assessed this and actually had it done.
Yeah, I think plus, this isn't a brand-new license or transfer to a new owner, it's just changing...
All he's doing is changing the name.
From an LLC to a, to a DBA. So, but I agree 100% with Charlie, because when I go by there, I see a number of cars, and I always think, huh, should they have that many? But I would say, we go through and allow this, and then Heather, within a reasonable amount of time, gets all this information together, and then the various car lots can be checked by the building inspector, zoning officer, whatever, to find out if they're in compliance. But why ding them now if we don't know what we're digging them on, basically?
Charlie?
I remember the town going through this with them. I remember them being required to put a fence up, and that they weren't supposed to have the vehicles there. I'm very disappointed to see that the records of the town don't exist. I agree, we need to take an issue to permit, but I've made my point by the fact of bringing this conversation up, that we need to start doing a little better with this.
So we have a motion to move forward and allow the change from LLC to DBA. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? A. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any nays? Okay.
Do we, do we have it on record that we asked Heather to, to finish up the paperwork? Sounds like she's well, well into it.
If you would like to make a motion to make sure she continues, that's okay.
I don't think I need a motion to make sure.
Can you just make sure that you continue? Thanks.
Can you report back?
Report back.
Yeah, it's probably going to take about a month, month and a half, between getting all the forms together and getting the Building Commissioner on board.
Okay.
That's great, thanks.
Next, we have to approve the one-year Animal Control Officer contract with Westfield. The Board of Selectmen had previously signed a temporary agreement with Westfield for the A C O officer, which expires in mid-July. Heather, Janine and Charlie will continue to work on bylaw amendments for dogs as the next special town meeting approaches. In the meantime, in order to continue coverage through Westfield, we'll need to sign onto the year contract with Westfield.
And to answer the question that I know you all have, we have not used them yet because there has not been any calls. I checked with dispatch and Lieutenant Goyette and the Chief earlier today.
Excuse me. So do I have a motion to sign the one-year A C O contract with Westfield?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the payroll and bill warrants. If somebody could read those.
I also have a couple extra ones that are over here that I will give to you guys. Jen brought in one that didn't make it in, and the other one is just simply a modification. Last time the board voted not to approve certain things, but they still said they would get paid. We just have to have signatures on file for that.
Thank you. Our next meeting is, while you, are you ready to read them? Has everyone had a chance to look at them?
I did.
Okay, usually I skip ahead, but we don't have to. Go ahead.
This is, this is normally the clerk reading. Would you like to read them?
Feel free.
This is a payroll warrant, P D fifteen hyphen fifty-one, total of seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant, P fifteen hyphen fifty-three, two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant, P D fifteen hyphen fifty-one A, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Treasury warrant, W fifteen hyphen fifty-two C, for six hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on a sec. Heather, on the front, it has a total of all of them. Can I just read one to do all of them? Do I have to go individual?
Uh, we're talking about one of those. You just know, just the totals, all we ever go into.
Okay, so I can rescind the one I just read and go for the total of all of them, which is W fifteen hyphen fifty-two for ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Then you have these from last week.
Keep that together. So these were approved last week?
They weren't approved, but we just need to sign off that we didn't approve them. So you just need to read that little thing and the total.
Although, although these, how much time is it? Although these payroll warrants were not previously approved by the Board of Selectmen, they will vote tonight to sign off on them. Payroll warrant fifteen dash fifty-one dated six eighteen, two thousand and fifteen.
Can just read the total.
Total is two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think that you need to sign that on. Okay.
Yep, that one too. Okay, payroll warrant, P D fifteen hyphen fifty-three, total of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that everything? Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from June sixteenth, a regular meeting and the approval of executive session minutes? And would anyone like to make, make a motion to approve the minutes of June sixteenth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next meeting is July fourteenth at six-thirty and also July twenty-eighth, which is a regular meeting and performance reviews for the Town Accountant and Fire Chief. If there's nothing else, we're going to move into executive session. We will not...
We're still going to have to leave.
Oh, we didn't, sorry. We go back to the liaison reports for Select Board. Charlie?
First, the Fire Department, Fire Department with the Finance Committee and myself going through the heart monitor that's necessary for the evening. The cost of the unit is approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. There was some communications with John. John suggested a lease agreement. Finance Committee reviewed it. They thought that was the best option. We're looking at basically five years at one point percent. It would be paid out of the current budget in the Fire Department, and what we need is a motion of this board to allow the Fire Chief to sign that contract or lease.
So my, oh, geez. My, my question, when I saw this, was although I knew that the heart monitor was on loan from West Hampton, how much notice did West Hampton give us and why wasn't this brought up during budget season and when we were looking at capital expenses and all of that stuff? I can't imagine that West Hampton said a week ago, oh, by the way, we need our heart monitor back. I'm just wondering how much notice was given.
It's my understanding that after our town meeting, West Hampton had their town meeting, and that's when it was brought to the Fire Chief's attention. The Fire Chief was hoping to get a federal grant to offset this, and it's obvious that wasn't occurring. And so I can't give you the months because of the background on the calendar in front of me.
So if our town meeting was in May and we're just hearing about it this week, he knew for approximately a month before he said anything.
Yeah.
I know, but why wouldn't you say to, why wouldn't you say, hey, by the way, we know we've had this on loan. We knew it was coming, just so you know. I mean, it wouldn't have been a surprise to anybody. It wouldn't have been a surprise to me to know that, you know, because Mr. Colita had said two years ago, we're borrowing this from West Hampton. We're going to have to give it back. It wasn't a surprise. It seems fishy to me that we wait one week when we knew for a month. That's, I just, I don't like that. It seems like when this is not a surprise to anybody that it's going to have to be returned. If you knew that you had a big cost coming up, you would say, hey, by the way, we have to return it. Just something for everybody to think about.
When I became aware of it, I sent an email to the Select Board so that you all knew what was going on.
Right, about a week ago.
So that gives you an idea about when I found out that this was really happening. I suggested that we go to the Finance Committee because obviously it's a financial issue. I can't answer that question.
Right. I don't, and I'm not asking you to. I'm just saying what my own personal opinion is, if, if you, we all knew that we were going to have to return it. The Fire Chief knew he was going to have to return it. We knew we were going to have to return it. So if you knew a month ago, rather than a week's notice, even if you were waiting for a grant, hey, by the way, we're giving the heart monitor back. I'm looking for a grant, but if it doesn't come up, or I don't get the grant, we're going to have to figure out another way to fund it. It just seemed, it just seemed to slide under the table a little bit.
Was this on the capital plan, this monitor?
No.
No, no, because if it was, it would have skewed how the Capital Committee would have voted on certain funding items.
Yeah, yeah.
Either way, they still need it, though.
Either way, we still need it. I just wanted to bring it up that I, you know, I...
You feel like it was done shady?
I do feel like it was a little shady. Maybe shady's not the right word. I think there was not enough communication to say, I, I mean, it's not like, it's not like we didn't know we were going to have to give it back. You know what I mean? So we knew it was not, it's not a secret that we had to give it back. So why, why do we wait this long to say, oh, by the way, we need to buy a new one? There's just lack of communication.
Yeah, I got to say, because using, using the word shady and...
It's not the right word.
Yeah. I don't think there was any thing that, in the Chief's mind, that he was trying to not let people know. Personally, he probably forgot about it, and should he have not forgot about it? Absolutely. And put it in the capital plan? Absolutely. But, you know, I think it was just lack of attention to it, maybe, or forgot about it with everything going on, but it should have been planned for. I agree.
So you need, can we vote on this if it's not on the agenda? Can we, Heather, can we vote to approve if it's not on the agenda?
I think you always have the option that you could vote, but the question is, is it going to put horrible strain if you waited two weeks to vote to move forward?
I mean, again, this comes down to the communication issue. So if you knew that you needed funding for a heart monitor and you knew you were having a meeting with the Finance Committee, your next step would be to say, oh, hey, by the way, could you put this on the agenda so that we could make sure we vote on it? Because it's a really big priority. It's not on here. And so generally, we don't vote on things that are not on the agenda.
Well, in fairness to the Fire Chief, when I submitted the, the email to all of yous a week ago, I was assuming it was going to be on the agenda.
Okay.
I was assuming.
I guess I'm just, I, I guess my feeling is that as a department head, he, you know, I, I realize there's a liaison, but the liaison is not in, in substitute of doing your job. The liaison is, you know, to help build a, you know, have a bridge between the two. I still think that he should have said, hey, by the way, this is a priority. Can we just make sure? Even if two people ask, it's not the end of the world. It's just a matter of getting things done. And that didn't happen. So the rest of the board can decide whether they want to vote on that or not tonight, or if, or if it's detrimental to wait until the next meeting and follow proper procedure.
Do we know when we have to give the current loan monitor back to West Hampton?
It already went back.
Went back already?
It's already.
Okay. If, if we can do it legitimately, I would, I would make a motion. We allow him to sign the lease for the monitor so he can get it in as soon as possible.
I agree.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of allowing the Fire Chief to sign off on the lease agreement, say aye.
Aye.
I was, had a little conversation with backup. I would like someone, Heather is fine, to review the lease terms to make sure that there's nothing in there that...
The Finance, Heather can agree, but the Finance Committee did approve them last night.
They did?
I thought they did.
Yeah, Finance Committee approved it.
The Ts and Cs?
They did not see the lease agreement, okay?
Yeah.
But they approved the concept, understanding the need.
Yeah. I, I think the lease should be reviewed. Again, I see a lot of leases and there's a lot of detrimental terms in those. But if Heather wants to do it, I would trust it. If not, she wants to ship me a copy, I email, I can do it quickly.
I think you both should review it, frankly.
Charlie, was the leasing in any of the emails?
No.
Okay.
No, no. This, actually, what happened with the lease thing started with John and me discussing things about the most cost-effective way of approaching it.
So maybe we need to amend the motion to allow the Fire Chief to sign the lease agreement pending the review of the lease by Heather?
And John.
And John.
I'm fine with amending my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of allowing the Fire Chief to sign off on the lease agreement for the cardiac monitor pending review of the lease, say aye.
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 I say nay. It's not on the agenda, and it's not how we generally do things. Is there any other reports from liaisons or Select Board members about anything?
You haven't asked me my vote.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said aye. I thought you said aye.
I didn't say a word.
Oh.
I actually agree with you, Liz. Okay?
Okay. So let's back up.
Just because I argue a point doesn't necessarily mean that I can...
I just thought I heard three ayes.
Devil's advocate.
Sorry, I thought I heard three ayes.
But remember, my motion was pending. It was legitimate that we could do this. You know, if it's not, we find out, then it'll be null and void.
I don't see the harm of waiting the two weeks. Getting the lease agreement, getting it reviewed and signature applied in two weeks.
So you don't see there's any detriment to having the second ambulances without one? I, I don't know the use...
They're not, they're not using them because of the fact that they're not paramedic level at this point.
Oh, well, okay.
So the E M Ts don't use them?
I don't believe so.
So there's no timeframe on it, really, because they don't have the license to run them, then?
I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't believe so.
We should probably check because we don't want the E M Ts to be down.
They do have one working cardiac monitor at the moment.
Yeah. If, if we have two ambulances out and they don't have a monitor on each one, that could be a definite detriment to the patient sitting in that ambulance. But if you, if we're not using them because we don't have the A C L S certification, that's a whole different ballgame.
I move that you allow them to sign it.
You're just adding your vote to the...
So you're just adding your vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are three ayes and a nay to allow the Fire Chief to sign pending, pending review.
But I must be very candid. I do agree with you. I just don't want to put the town in an awkward situation.
Yeah. Yeah, if we knew for sure it wasn't...
Because we're not in an awkward enough situation already.
You don't want to be the patient in the second ambulance.
Yeah, I don't want to be there going, yeah.
Are there any other Select Board updates or report?
Yes.
Oh.
So reason I wanted to bring you back to this.
Fair enough.
Gun Road.
Oh, right.
The cleanup. We went to court Monday and the receiver backed away.
For what reason?
I don't know for sure.
Okay.
Okay. At this point in time, there's dialogue. I've been actively involved in this for some time, but I'm neither the liaison for the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Health. My capacity was the state district health officer, and as of the strike of midnight tonight, I am no longer the district health officer. So my question to the board is, do you wish me to keep a rapport and liaison with the Board of Health on this one piece? Because I know all the ins and outs of it.
I would say yes, because we don't have a liaison to the Board of Health or to the Board of Assessors, which is something for the next agenda.
And I would like to say, not just for this one piece, but ongoing if you're willing to do it.
They in themselves are a major project. And between fire, police, Highway's been kind of quiet, but between fire and police, it, it does draw a lot of time. I've been actively going to court with the Board of Health and working with the Attorney General's Office on this. I don't mind continuing it, and I rather suspect the Board of Health is going to be approaching me on issues as it goes on, but because I'm now acting as a selectman, I want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen is okay with this.
Gives you the authority.
Well, at least a comfort zone to know that...
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion that I make that you're the liaison from the board.
Second. Is there any other discussion about letting Charlie have his hands in this? Gun Road situation?
Oh, no, not this one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then aye.
Between the kickbacks and the hands and the stuff.
No, because the Board of Health, we're liaison, so I'm not going to say this to you. They asked you to be the liaison?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Long meeting. Oh.
Do you want to put that on the agenda? I mean...
We can, because you had, I was waiting for you all to...
On the next, okay, so this is just for the Gun Road issue.
That's all I was thinking.
Yes. And so then make, can we please make sure that there's a liaison to the, put on the agenda for assessors and Board of Health? Because those are two big ones that we're missing.
Quick update?
Yes.[1772.13]